Okay. Welcome, everybody, to the Select Board meeting for October 12th, 2021. We'll call the meeting to order, and please let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it is. I am proud of it and I believe in liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. So, we don't have any public hearings tonight. We don't have any presentations that I'm aware of, but we do have open time for the public. We've moved that to the beginning of the meetings. So, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning here for anyone who has open time issues to say. We will entertain that at present time. Anyone? Who's not on the agenda with an item? Even Tammy, nothing?
Sorry. Tammy Lunas, 298 College Highway. Just wanted to let everyone know or remind them that this Saturday is the historical cemetery walk. You need to make reservations. Right now, I believe we are booked until 2:00, so our next are like 2:20 and 2:40. To make reservations, please email Clark Chapman 1827@gmail.com. Thank you. It's the normal, the event starts from 1:00 and goes from 1:00 to 3:00.
Right. And doing groups of like 10 people or something? Is that right?
Yep.
Perfect. Okay. Very good. No one else? All right. Good. Well, that's a short open time this evening, so therefore, we'll just keep moving on. We may have Jessica up a little earlier than planned. Glad you're here early. Anyway, good. Well, we're going to continue with our notion of the Committee Commission Board reports. This is something we've started this year to get online with more direct information from the committees themselves. As you know, we're, all of us are liaisons to just about all the committees, not everyone, but to many of the committees. And so, we do try and attend when we can and report back what we know, but it doesn't necessarily give the fullest picture each time. So, we wanted to make space at least twice a year to hear from the committees themselves. And we had suggested a bit of an outline that they could follow. Some of it doesn't necessarily apply in terms of some of the committees, but nonetheless. So, I would like to start with that, and thank you for sending in your reports ahead of time. It gives us a little bit more of an idea what's going on, so it gives us a chance to read through them. So, the evening, tonight, we have Community Preservation, Conservation Commission, Open Space Committee, and the Parks Commission. And the Parks Commission people are not available tonight. The chair is out of town and has not designated someone, so we have moved him to next meeting. So, Parks is going to come on next meeting. There was nobody else available to show up this evening, and he asked that we push it off until he was back in town. So, that is the case. With that, let's start with the Community Preservation Committee, Virginia.
Excuse me if it's all right. I can't talk through that. I'm Virginia Aheart, the Chair of Community Preservation. And this is the 20th anniversary of community preservation in the state of Massachusetts. When the Act was passed and towns and cities began to opt-in, Southampton jumped in very early, which was great, because we got started and began to know what's going on. I think most of you probably know quite a bit about it, so I'm not going to go back through all of that. I will say that there are several things going on right now, and we'll talk about that. If you've got questions, I'll try to answer it, or if you have questions about the makeup of the committee or what we actually do. But right now, we're waiting till the mid-October to see what our state grant will be. And the state grant comes to us based on what our, we put in through our surcharge. So, by having the 3%, which is the highest, we have a good base, and then they, we stay in the rounds of giving out till the last round. So, we've done quite well. There were years, of course, at the beginning when we got 100% match, but, and then that was several years. We did drop one year to as low as 58%. It's based on a fee, and it's earmarked by the state, on a fee on deed transactions. And that fee had been $25 per transaction. And after 19 years, the state looked at it and said, "Everything else has gone up." So, this is the first year their income is based on a $50, and that means we should probably be doing pretty well, especially considering the hot real estate market this year. We're hoping, anyway. The second thing I'd like to bring to your attention, and I like it the way it is, I've been working with this for a long time, is that most of our members, seven of our nine members, come from other committees, commissions, boards of the town. There's only two of us that represent, we're elected by the town and represent the towns' people. Why I'm saying, bringing this before you is I don't want to change that. I like having people from each of these committees, commissions, but it does put a little strain on them, especially if through the, somebody like our Select Board member, and she's got other committees assigned to her from the Select Board, and a couple Select Board meetings a month, many of them are really strained. And sometimes, we're really scratching to get that quorum that we need. But right now, I can tell you who the committees are that send us people. The state requires that the Housing Authority, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, Park Commission, and, let's see.
Planning Board.
Planning Board. Yeah. I almost forgot the planning. That's okay. And then, the two that were added by the town were Finance and Select Board. And then Janet and I have been elected, Janet Brown and I. However, we have, right now, we have two articles headed toward the special town meeting. One is a kind of interesting, it's a coalition through the Pioneer Valley Planning has put this together. It's a coalition of the cities and towns that have a part of the old New Haven-Northampton Canal. And it is a, what are they calling themselves? Let's see. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, New Haven-Northampton Canal Project. And that's, let's see, Westfield-Russell, Southampton, East Hampton, oh wait, Southwick, start there, and East Hampton and Northampton. And we have all, they have all contributed some money toward paying this. They're going to be mapping the canal, and with the hope that they can get it on to the National Registry of Historic Places. The canal in Connecticut is on that. This was, the first attempt to do this was probably 15 years ago. We had people that worked very, very hard on this. I imagine that when Dick Frary turned over his stack of papers to our, the Historical Commission, that he alone had it. He probably had a stack like this. But for some reason, it fell through, and it never happened. Now, it is in Connecticut. Connecticut is on the registry. So, we would like to get this on. Plus, when they came and talked to us, we found out that Southampton has the most visible and marked parts of the canal of any of the towns or cities here in Massachusetts. It actually went right between the Gorl House at the end of Brickyard and the Howland House, which is next down by the pond. And in fact, the Gorl place was a depository where people moving goods would leave the goods, load them on another boat or whatever. And you can see a part of the canal right there. You can also, if you're really looking, see a part of it in the landscape as it went on up from there. Eventually, of course, the railroad came and put the canal out of business, took, actually ran along where a lot of the canal was. So, one of the things that will be voted on, we hope affirmatively, is the small stipend that goes into helping with that. It's $20,000 out of historical. And you probably do know that we have funds in historical, and open space recreation, and in housing. But we also, they have to have 10% of the income from the state put in them every year for just their use. But we do have considerable undesignated money, plus, of course, we have our own, I mean, designated historical.
So, that'll be an article coming up for the special?
That will be an article coming up. They're kind of, the committee is getting kind of antsy because, of course, it's much easier with a city. So, Westfield, East Hampton.
They'll have to take their chances.
Northampton, you only have to convince the council and get them to read it three times and pass it. Where with the towns?
Yeah.
But everyone else has some money, and they have already earmarked it, and we are just waiting. The other thing is, is the Greenway. And there was a grant, maybe, Ed, do you want to tell what you know, because I'm just going on what you know?
At, I did present at the last Community Preservation meeting, and a request from the Greenway Committee to fund $270,000, which is actually the matching amount from the annual town meeting, to be utilized for, $170,000 for acquisition and $100,000 for design. The town has received two $100,000 grants, one a small-town capital through housing, and the other $100,000 from Mass Trails, which both require matches. The theory being, up until the state budget was passed at the beginning of July, community preservation funds were not allowed to be used for acquisition when it's rail banking. We are rail banking, which means that all of the probabilities are very, very low. We will acquire the right-of-way from the railroad company, and sometime over the next 99 years, if they decided that, shall we say, right-of-way was profitable, will be reenacted and rebuilt, they could actually re-energize it and pay the town off and bring it back. However, if you look at the costs of getting it back from the town, and then what it costs per mile to actually rail, construct rail line, it's extremely, shall we say, prohibitive. So, I think we're in a good place here. When this state budget was passed, there was an attachment to the budget, which now allows us to utilize community preservation funds in rail banking instances, which this is. So, when that did pass, I thought it might be a good idea. I brought it up to the Select Board, I brought it up to the Greenway Committee, that we may want to approach the Community Preservation Committee and see if they're willing to do that $270,000 and take it from community preservation funds, which residents have already paid for in other state, shall we say, residents have paid for. And if it does pass, if, and the community preservation did vote to put it on the town meeting, if it does pass at the town meeting, my recommendation would then at the annual town meeting in May, to go back and actually ask to rescind the debt exclusion vote, which was done at the last annual town meeting, and take that off the books. So, it would save our taxpayers. And my memory is, I think it was between 10 and 12, 12 cents per thousand.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, those will be two possibilities coming up.
Great. Yeah. So, and it will be coming out of the undesigned funds, which still leaves us with some money to do some other things. We have one more item that had come up from the Park Commission, and there were so many questions. It's, you know, to put in a trail, maybe have a splash pad, some things like that. There were so many questions that we just wouldn't, we'd still be meeting tonight from last Wednesday to try to get all the answers. So, we will come back to that. Hopefully, we will get it settled in time to get a, and they have a grant, too. Hopefully, we'll get it done in time to present a project to the town. I don't know, is there, are there any other questions or anything anyone wants to ask?
Virginia, thank you for that. So, I was only able to look up the past 10 years on the Department of Revenue's website, but in 2012, the average single-value home in Southampton was 268,000, and now in 2021, it's 325,000. So, it's a 21.3% increase in what is eligible to be taxed. And as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, the value of your house, you're credited for the first $100,000.
Yes.
From the CPA, and then everything above that is taxed.
Yeah.
At 3%. And the magic, the reason why it's at the 3% is that's the minimum percentage to allow you to be eligible for all the awards throughout the year.
Yes.
So, the 3% is really our floor. We don't, we don't want a lower percentage than the 3. Would there ever be consideration, since in the past 10 years, the value of the homes have increased by 21%? It stands to reason that in the past 20 years, since we've been doing this, they've increased more than that. Possibly raising the exemption from 100 to 125 or to 150 to ease the seniors, potentially, who generally don't have the highest-value homes? Just a thought.
Well, I think it's a thought that ought to be looked into and considered. When community preservation began, it went through quite a process of, first of all, it had to both go on the town meeting floor and pass, and then pass a written ballot. The committee really operates at the will of the town. So, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into where we could start something like that, but it might be a good idea to look into it.
I just, I think, given that the history and the past, and, you know, I'm a firm believer in the CPI, right? So, I'll just say that to start with. But as your opening statements were, they've doubled the registry tax now. So, in theory, we're going to double our income coming in. Now, it's going to be less than that, probably, because more communities will jump on, and that dilutes the pot.
Yeah.
Which is somewhat understandable, but, but if there is a potential time to do an adjustment, this might be the time when the state is actually helping out for once in doubling, doubling the registry fees.
Maybe we can follow suit, just not double, but consider a different limit.
Something to think about, because that would be, the folks that would recognize that benefit the most are the ones that have been there homes a full 20 years or more, and aren't necessarily the new construction that are coming in that are driving the rates up.
Yeah. Yeah, I guess I'll have to look into how it might be done.
And I did speak to one of your committee members, and he told me that unless you signed off on it, it wasn't going to happen. So, that's why I brought it directly to you. Has all the faith in you to make this happen.
As I said, I need to know what the legal steps are. I don't think it's necessarily a bad idea.
Great.
And it would probably, I mean, when you stop to think what we're getting from some of the new homes, we probably wouldn't even notice. But it's the legal steps that I'm just not sure of.
Okay.
So, is there any other?
Other questions? Anybody? Joy, anybody? No? No? Good. Thank you, Virginia. Yes?
Tammy Lunas, 298 College Highway. Would that be a citizens' petition that would have to be done to try to get that?
What, to raise the limit from the?
Raise the, keep the 3%, so that we're still getting the full match, but?
100 to 125%? I don't know.
My guess is it could go either way.
It'd be?
I mean, citizens always have the right to bring a petition, but the Select Board in conjunction with the?
Because I know there was a group that tried to do it before, but it was to lower the percentage. But now, if they understand that if we could increase that, and there's several of us, that would be very happy.
We'd have to look into it and find out what, you know, the legal program is as well.
Interesting idea.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Thanks, Virginia. Much appreciate that. Glad to hear that Community Preservation's got a few things going on. That's, that's good. I know you're always looking for applications, so that's great. Okay. Conservation Commission. And I guess we also have conflicts tonight with CONCOM. Apparently, two or three members still work until 6 o'clock and could not get here, as they were hoping to. So, Ed, you have the report, if you'd like to read it, on behalf of the Chair of CONCOM?
I'd be happy to.
We have a written report?
Yes, I do. It's also in your packet, packets, too. Conservation Commission Quarterly Report, July, August, September, 2021. And this was sent to me from their Chair, Marla Hank. Current priorities activities. As permits are requested of us, we arrange site visits, hold public hearings, and issue the signed paperwork to the applicant and Mass DEP. During the last three months, we received two agricultural protection restrictions, one abbreviated notice of resource area delineation, two certificates of compliance, one emergency certificate, and two requests for determination of applicability. A forest management plan for the Lyman Family Conservation Area was approved by the Department of Conservation and Recreation. Work on several properties has been delayed due to the amount of rain this year. Work is ongoing to have volunteers help with trail maintenance. Time has been spent related to the Manhan Meadow Sanctuary RTP grants. Plans for the East Street Bridge project were reviewed and approved per the Order of Conditions, which had been issued in 2020. Budget spending status concerns. Not having had the services of a full-time town accountant for months has left the journal. Entries to our accounts uncertain to us. We request as soon as possible a meeting between the town accountant and the Conservation Commission's Treasurer, Art Lawrence, to reconcile Conservation Commission's entries with the towns for fiscal year '21. Personnel staffing updates. Not applicable. Plans, events for next four to six months. Work should begin on the restoration of the Manhan Meadow Sanctuary trails and replacement of the bridge crossing the Manhan River. Contracts for these projects must be signed. Forestry work should begin at the Alice Brown Conservation Area when it dries out. A crew from the Student Conservation Association will be clearing a trail on our Pomeroy Mountain property. Planning for use of funding from the Attorney General's Office for work related to protection of the Manhan River's watershed will be completed, and the work started to remove invasive plants and damaged culverts. Long-term issues for Select Board consideration planning. Southampton should have a conservation agent. Much work has been done in 2017 to hire an agent. The need has not diminished. Suggested tools, resources to help do your job more efficiently or cost-effectively. Having update access to the Conservation Commission's webpage would be more efficient to upload and download files and change text on our page as needed. The Open Space Committee collaborates with other boards, committees, and groups.
That's the wrong one. I think you're done.
It's Open Space.
Oh, there we go.
Just CONCOM. Very good.
Perfect.
Okay, just CONCOM. So, that's, good. So, a few issues there.
And just as an added, added note, I'd like to thank Marla and Art for going out and viewing the erosion control that was put up for Hoyou Gas and Electric Company's contractor for the directional drilling to move the gas line off the East Street Bridge in preparation for that project. They went out today, so that drilling can start later this week. Now, Conservation had to approve that erosion control for that to move on.
Okay. Good. Given that there's two or three issues in here, could you give us any idea about what's happening with accounts? Would it be possible to have a meeting? Is this something that our new accountant could help Art with, or is this something that you want to look at as our cleanup to FY '21? I mean, I think they're looking at trying to start clean with '22 to know what their beginning balances are, right, for their various accounts?
Correct. And you're allowed to throw anything at me you would like, but I am getting mixed messages from the Select Board, because it has been stated that the team of our new accountants would focus on '22, and we would bring someone in to work on '21, so.
Yeah. So, I think it's a matter of timing. We have said that, and that is, I think, are still our position, that we want to have Bradley and Ellen move forward with FY '22. But at the same time, we're getting many months into this fiscal year, too, so I can understand where various committees are getting a little anxious, not knowing what their account amounts are. So, we will talk about that and get back to them in terms of what can be done about that. Anything else in terms of, I know, conservation agent, that's something that had been around, I think, before my time, but it had been?
Can I just go back to the counting? Just to be clear, we're just letting the treasurer know that to wait until we have someone for him to work with? I mean, I don't want him, you know, emailing the new town accountant. I can see where mixed messages are getting.
Well, but, okay, so, just to be clear, what we had said was that we were going to try and bring in a CPA firm to do any kind of re-verification cleanup of FY '21 accounts, which is, I think, what he's talking about, right? He's looking for those?
Yeah.
Balances for his, his various funds that, that CONCOM manages, right?
Okay. So, we're waiting?
Well, we'll hear more about that in terms of the avail- So we'll hear more about that in terms of the availability of that person, I think, at this point.
How many similar, how many subcommittees out there have their own treasurers? How many other committees are in the same boat or making the same request?
I know planning boards as well. Planning, zoning, probably four or five.
So I would, I would say that we probably should send a communication to all those plies saying that we have, we have charged the town accountant for FY22 forward, not FY21, and we will provide guidance at a future date, hopefully soon, on who their point of contact's going to be. So to Joy's point, to not have...
Multiple emails going back and forth.
And also to give Bradley and Ellen their direction.
Sure. Give them a brief, brief reading room to get started with FY22 as well. Okay, we can certainly do that to the various committees and boards that have people that have, or have accounts on our, on our books here.
I can take care of that.
That's true. Good point. Yep. Back on the Conservation Agent, that's one that I know we had, had shared at one point in time with East Hampton. I think it started for a year and then kind of did go beyond that for a variety of, I'm assuming, funding issues. And that's something I assume that once we get into budget season, CONCOM will bring forward again for our consideration. And I think in terms of the updates on webpages, that's something I know the tech committee has talked about. Once we get going on, on trying to figure out how we can do some new design work on the webpage and make it more accessible, I think the goal would be to try and have the heads of various departments have access to their own page to update things rather than having to go, you know, they'd have limited control in terms of what they could do to update maybe...
The website would have to be converted to another form, but yes, that is one of the things that I think is extremely important about changing that website over to a different form is some of, some of the new technology that is out there will allow, whether it's departments or boards and committees, to change some of those fields on their own.
Instead of having it all centralized. So I think too, as we talk about, when we get into our Cost efficiencies committee, et cetera, that would be a perfect topic to talk about, how we can look at those kinds of things that may or may not have such a financial impact, but it definitely got a workload impact and efficiency and productive, productivity aspect to it. So in terms of contracts, the last I had heard was that they were still dealing with the contractor and the environmental, or the, sorry, blanking your name, the environmental person anyway, to come up with some clarity about what had to be reworked in terms of one of the trail designs?
Correct.
And that still hasn't finalized so that they can actually get you information to sign a contract yet?
Not as, not as of today, so I don't know how far along they are in that process.
Okay. Joy, do you have any other information on that at all?
No, in regards to the contracts, no.
Yeah, no, in terms of what's happened, whether the contractor and, I think it's...
Stackman Associates.
Yeah, okay. But no, it's Kane, isn't it?
Well, the vendor is Kane, the environmental person.
Okay, okay. So the two of them are supposed to be working it out and then getting to you so that the contract can be signed. So I guess if there's anything else we can do, I mean, we've kind of left it in CONCOM's hands to, to try and get the parties together to do this. And then on the second part, this was the second Mass Trails Grant was related to the bridge. And that, I believe, we haven't even gotten that out to bid or anything yet, right? That's got to be a process to do, right?
No, and their, their portion of funding under the Mass Trails is different from our portion. Theirs comes directly from federal dollars, so actually, they didn't even get their award papers or contracts till probably about a month, at least after ours. They've got them now and actually, Marla sent them to meet today. And we're going to try to get those filled in and signed tomorrow so they can go back to the state and the contract be issued and then CONCOM can move forward on doing a bid for the bridge replacement.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, it seemed like the high highlighted issues. Any questions from anybody else here from what you've read, heard?
I just have one question. Is the Conservation, Conservation Agent, is that something that the town could get a grant for? I know that's more of a short-term kind of solution.
The problem with that, I mean, maybe, but the problem is it's usually only good for like a year. And you've already, you know, set up expectations, you've got recurring costs, and that's usually what our challenge is, that, you know, you might get some relief for a little bit to, you know, to get ahead of the game and, and get some work done, but in the long run, you're not necessarily solving the problem because you've still got to be looking at budgeting and recurring costs. So in some cases, you know, when you have a grant, you can build, you know, some level of supervision or admin kind of that into the grant, but that doesn't quite, quite match what a Conservation Agent's duties really are, I think.
No, I know.
Yeah, so it's a lot more complicated than that.
I just really would like to get some kind of long-term plan.
Yeah, I agree. Well, and again, I mean, it may be worth exploring again as we get into our Cost efficiencies alternatives committee, because we had had this joint person with East Hampton and it lasted for a while and then it went away. So however, whether it's with East Hampton or somebody else, I don't know if they'd be willing to do that again, but at least to explore options and find out other communities that would be maybe in a similar situation and maybe we can find a way to share, share somebody or at least get somebody on for X amount of hours per, per week or per month if nothing else. So that would be something I'm hoping, yeah. So we'll, I'm sure it'll come up at budget time in another month or two. I'm sure we'll hear a lot more about it. All right, good. Well, thanks on that for CONCOM. We will corral them next time to be here in person. Somebody, we do have, however, the next person, Cindy, for the Open Space Committee, please.
I'm also going to take my mask down. I think better when I can talk. So Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale Road. And I'm the Chairperson of the Open Space Committee, which is a committee of appointees as well, except for one at-large member. And the appointees include somebody from planning boards, somebody from assessors, somebody from CPC, somebody from Select Board, let's see, I know I'm missing people on that, Parks, and Conservation Commission. And it's, it's a very vibrant committee, but having said that, when people come from other committees, they're busy. They're busy and they, they have other responsibilities and, need I tell you, are all volunteers. We work together, we collaborate with other boards and committees and groups and develop programs and participated in activities to achieve the mission designated by the Select Board in 2020. And I included in your packet a copy of the mission, especially for people who are new, just so you understand that it was, I should say, the charge, which includes the mission. We also take into consideration, excuse me, our master plan and the update of our master plan, which, the prioritization of it, as well as our Open Space and Recreation Plan. And within that, within the Open Space and Recreation Plan, which was, which is now the 2020 to 2027 one, Chapter 5 talks about the conservation and recre, the lands of conservation and recreation interest and identifies criteria to identify these lands. And it focuses on, within that criteria, Open Space Committee has helped, has begun to develop kind of a changing, ever-changing and growing document of lands that fall into those criteria. Now, we are a little, we are very sensitive to landowners. We're not publicizing anything and saying, you know, we're looking for so-and-so's land because we respect landowners and their rights and, and the fact that some people have different kinds of plans for their properties and that's the way it should be. But some people are very interested in conservation and very interested in long-term planning, whether they want to continue to own the land themselves or that they might be looking for other ways to see long-term conservation. And there's a variety of ways, and I'm just learning a lot of those myself. So what have we done? And I said in the last two-plus years, because actually, this was an ad hoc committee prior to becoming a, a committee of the Select Board. And we have continued to develop that inventory of lands. We've guaranteed, we've, at one point, we looked back at old Select Board minutes and also Conservation Commission minutes, and we realized that periodically, landowners have come forward and said, I need to figure out something I can do for my land. And they didn't really have any place to go. They, they just brought forth their thoughts and ideas and sometimes it just kind of went nowhere. But we're, we're trying to move forward on that. We've also developed a series of programs and hikes for landowners and residents, which was supported most recently by a Neighborhood Outreach Grant. And those, those events took place early in this year. Now, we had the challenges of, the whole thing had to be completed and the reports had to be in before the end of May, and we had COVID, and therefore, we couldn't do things inside. And it was still pretty successful, but Conant Park turned out to be very cold on the days that we held some of the programs, like windy, like blowing. I have provided to you the mailer that was sent to all households. I realize some of the mailers look similar, but Chris maybe can, no, that's the other one, the other one right there. Yep, that was the mailer that was sent in. And this was sent to all households. Now, it was sent using the Indicia of the printer. And I discovered that not everybody got it on time. Some people got it weeks and weeks and weeks late. But nonetheless, we got a lot of good press out of having that mailer go out to all households. And I do say, this was a volunteer who's highly talented and, and gave her time to the development of that and also did it gratis for us. The printing costs money and that was supported by the Neighborhood Outreach Grant. We also continue to follow up with landowners with questions that came up at those meetings and other people that didn't necessarily have the opportunity to attend. We collaborate with the Conservation Commission, the Park Commission, Water Commission, and the Friends of Southampton Open Space, which is a newly formed 501(c)(3) organization, to build interest and educate on topics of land conservation and care of our town properties. And I heard in the report from the Conservation Commission that ongoing care of the, of the properties is, we, we know we have good people in this town that really want to help. Some of it is a case of management and kind of coordination. And actually, tomorrow evening, there's going to be a, a little meeting at Conant Park that's just going to sort of be a brainstorming opportunity for people and how can we do this? Some of our properties have a great deal of invasive species on them and others don't. And some of our other properties need some other things. So we, we collaborate to try to be supportive in any of that. We also participated in 2021 Celebrate Southampton event. At this point, would you pick up the other little thing? I think Joy's looking at it right now. Nope, the one Joy's looking on. And this was something that was available at the Celebrate Southampton event, but I'm not sure, we had enough people visiting the booth. But as you can see on that, it talks about all three, Open Space Committee, Conservation Commission, and Friends of Southampton Open Space. And this too was developed by a volunteer, same volunteer, to help. And so I've left some of those in the town hall. And I know people are listening from home, and if anybody has questions about it, about how the three committees can work together and collaborate, please let me know because that's going to be the success of us anyway. And there is a, there are some of these here in the town hall. Finally, we worked with PVPC and the Water Commissioners, and it was supported by a CPC, by CPC funding to create a mailer regarding the protection of the Barnes Aquifer. And that is the last one you're holding up, Chris, which has got a map of the Barnes Aquifer on one side. It was a mailer, so there is a mail section on that where the address goes, but it also talks about good practices. And that went to every household as well. I hope it stayed in the household. We sort of envisioned that it would be attached to a refrigerator with a magnet or something, and I hope it got utilized for that purpose. Currently, we are kind of excited. We're, we're hopeful that we're going to be able to work more intensely with Kestrel Land Trust. And I've spoken to their Executive Director and actually, and their Conservation Director. And we, we look forward to the possibility of a large grant that Kestrel would help us with, something called a Landscape Partnership Grant. And that, there's a lot of moving parts to that. We're volunteers. This was not my background professionally, but I'm, but I'm energized by the, the good people that we work on with this. But I'm going to need some assistance from somebody like Kestrel to have some of these things happen. We'll continue to support strong relationships with our landowners in town, again, reminding people, we're not telling people they have to do something specific with their land that they maybe didn't have on their plans, but some people are interested in protecting their legacy. And also educate everybody in town on the benefits of a combination of factors, including conservation pollinator and helping with pollinator and monarch-friendly plantings, trail maintenance, and broad conservation topics, which we, we read about in the news often. And continue to strategize around achieving our mission. We don't have a budget. We have nothing. I know there was something in the override, a modest amount of money for Open Space Committee. Herefore, everything was either paid for by a grant or volunteers put money forth to buy coffee for those events or to pay for the postage for those events or, and bring snacks to those events. It's, it's still, we have no budget. Maybe in the future, we'll get one. We also have no personnel. Everybody's volunteers. And plans going forward for the next four to six months. Again, I mentioned that we have a tentative appointment to tour the town with the Kestrel's Executive Director and to have her understand what a very beautiful and rich, rich town we have in terms of our properties. Follow-up with certain landowners. And I've got names of people. We've met with a few, helped to connect people with, who might be considering conservation restrictions on their lands with others who have already gone through the process. We are hopefully completing plans to support a pollinator garden and education around that. And also, maybe we'll look forward to another Neighborhood Outreach Grant for the beginning of next year. Long-term, what can the Select Board do to help us? Well, you know, you do help us. You're, you're a very pro Select Board. And I know some of you, and I don't know you, Mr. Lumber, but if you have any questions, I'm here. And we, we do need to collaborate on these things. We need to keep people educated. We need to keep it alive. And there's been articles in Reminder, and there's been various things. And you know, we're not alone. There's other towns around here that are doing really wonderful conservation projects. And why not Southampton? Because we're a pretty fortunate town. I think that's my report. Questions for me?
Very, very busy committee, for sure. Yeah, questions, anybody?
Do you have any questions?
No? Nope. Busy?
Yeah, I just want to say that, you know, anything, any collaboration with the Kestrel Land Trust would be something that I'd find highly desirable because any of the properties that I've been on or trails that, you know, that they were either responsible for or assisted in developing are excellent and, and they would do, go a long way and do, I think, bring more recreation to the town. You know, I just see models of, of hiking trails.
There's another point to make about that, Francine, and that's that Kestrel, they're professionals. They know, and they know what grants are out there. I know we've got people in our town that look all the time for grant opportunities, but guess what? We were told about one the other day, which I'm really interested in finding out more about. And it has to do with if a landowner really liked the idea of using altering vehicles on their property. And that was important to them and they wanted it open for that use. There's actually a grant that could be designated, an ATV property. And so I'm, I'm trying to find out more about that. There, you know, so it's, there's a variety and, you know, this whole concept of a dog park, maybe that might be something that we might be thinking about in the future. And maybe these aren't things that would necessarily appeal to me. I don't have a dog, but, but I have neighbors with beautiful dogs. I try hard to be friendly to local dogs. But the point is, we, we have to develop these kinds of relationships. And maybe it's not just Kestrel either. Maybe there are other organizations like Audubon and like Nature Conservancy that we, why not? We are really, do I sound excited about Southampton because it's here? Okay. Other questions?
Great, and you know, there's been a lot going on and I, and I know you guys have put a lot of effort and energy in all these, I mean, these brochures have just been so professionally done. I mean, I, this is, this is just classy work. And, you know, kudos to not only the committee, but all the volunteers that helped put this together and design this. I mean, I can't even imagine what this might have cost if you had to pay for it. So it's really a, a beautiful document as well as this one too. So thanks for all the efforts and I hope things keep on moving and especially the friends get energized as well and work collaboratively with you guys as well.
Cindy, what time is the meeting tomorrow?
It's 6 o'clock at Conant Park. And, and people are welcome to come to brainstorming for the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. Great. Well, thanks, everybody, for those update reports. It's really very good to hear what's going on and hear the, sort of the scope of everything. You know, sometimes when we all attend your various meetings as liaisons, we come back and we give the, you know, the highlights. We give the three or four bullet point sentences of something that was acted on at that time, but it doesn't really give us the full picture. And I think that's part of the reason why we wanted to reinstitute this notion of having boards and commission committee reports, because we wanted to really, you know, better understand how everybody's working in town and what we can do to support you. And even though some of the questions that we put out here don't necessarily apply to some of these committees in terms of staffing per se, but you know, how we could help support you and help you do your work better as well. I think we're trying to keep the channels of communication open and trying to have a dialogue and be sure that we're all kind of working on the same, same path, same direction, same goals, I hope. So thanks, everybody, for all your time and effort. And again, thanks to all the volunteers, not only the ones that are represented through the committees tonight, but the hundreds of volunteers that we do have in town, because there are many more than we probably even realize. So, great. Well, thank you very much. With that, we're going to go on to just a couple of things. We have one resignation tonight. This is from the Conservation Committee, sorry, Conservation Commission, excuse myself. And this is from Dan Lovale. Now I'll just read it out. Dear Select Board, Town Clerk and Conservation Commission Chair, after deep thought and reflection, I have decided to resign my seat on the Conservation Commission as a voting member. The reasoning behind my decision is to allow someone with more advanced knowledge in the area of environmental science to join the Commission and have a voting seat. While I have learned a great deal during my time, I would like to change to an associate member where I can focus on specific projects such as trail maintenance, et cetera. Perhaps in the future, when I have built a stronger knowledge base, I would rejoin again as a voting member, but for now, I feel this is the best choice for the town and myself. Very respectfully, Dan Lovale, 17 Glendale Road. So Dan has been a force of nature in some ways in terms of not only involvement with CONCON, but many other committees in town. And I'm sure he's feeling a little bit overloaded and stretched. So unfortunately, we have a motion or we have a request before us to approve his resignation. So I'll take a motion. So move. All right. Could I have a second please?
I will second that.
All right. Any thoughts? If not, we'll just go right onto a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
I do want to say though, thank you to Dan. He was absolutely instrumental in pursuing the Wetlands Bylaw Act and getting that passed through town. And he's one of the most enthusiastic volunteers in this town that we have. So we are very lucky to have him on any of our boards. And I know that he will stay as a volunteer for Conservation Commission.
He'll stay engaged, yeah. And it's my understanding that through the MACC, the Massachusetts Conservation Commission, unlike many of the other committees and boards around MAC, has the ability to have an associate member, which is still a member, they just cannot be a voting member. So that, that is what Dan's requesting and I assume that'll be taken up within CONCON and stuff.
Yes.
So, very good. All right. Thank you much. Okay, let's move on to a few reports. We've got the Town Administrator Report. Ed, you want to give us a few highlights of what's been going on?
Sure. First off, we have been notified from the state that our work and application to become an MVP community was reviewed and the town of Southampton is now designated as a Municipal Vulnerability Planning Community, MVP Community. So that is now official. The annual tests of our Town Hall Fire Suppression System and the sensors was conducted this past Friday, October 8th. Everything except one fire alarm in the basement, which is connected to the dry system, tested out satisfactorily. The vendor will be returning to check on the fire sensor, which didn't operate automatically, but was able to be triggered manually to diagnose and repair that unit. The street and road updates for this construction season are still continuing. County Road North is currently receiving a paved level overlay by the vendor and will also have its lines repainted. Hillside Meadow will also be receiving a paved overlay in the weeks ahead. These road updates are being done through the use of our Chapter 90 funding from the state. And just a reminder that the Assessor's Office will be open on Mondays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., Tuesdays from 9:00 a.m. to noon, and also on Wednesdays from 9:00 a.m. to 2:30 p.m. while they are looking to fill a full-time principal assessor vacancy. The temporary part-time principal assessor, David Zagorsky, has started working in the office. And then upcoming Select Board meetings, October 26th, and Select Board meetings for November to be determined.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, Ed? I just have one. With the MVP Planning Committee, does that mean that we're now eligible to apply for the MVP Action Grant? Is my understanding?
That and any of the grants that we actually receive bonus points for, for being Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Community, we can check those boxes.
Okay, great. And at some point, if we could find, you know, the, whatever the final, final report is that everybody worked on, the committee that worked on it, and just have that posted on our website too on the
Sure.
Where the appropriate page is to post it. The front page is getting a little crowded there, the web, the homepage, but someplace to have that report available so everybody can take a look and see what that was, what that included, what it involved. Good.
Certainly.
That'd be great. All right. Anything else? All right. If not, let's quickly go through a few Select Board reports. I don't know that we have too many. John, you want to start with anything?
No, I have two weeks with no meetings.
Wow, all right. Well, I guess I chose the right person. Okay. Let's go, Francine.
Okay. The Bylaw Committee met on September 29th and conducted a preliminary review of the September 21st public meeting and is considering the comments it received for inclusion in its final draft of the three bylaws that were discussed at that meeting. The summary of the meeting will be reviewed at tomorrow's Bylaw Committee meeting so that the results of that will be posted on the town website as documentation of those proceedings and available to everyone in the community. The committee reviewed and updated its progress chart and prioritized the next set of bylaws for review and revision. And I won't go through that list right now, but we have our work cut out for us, as a guarantee there. And just to let you know that our next meeting is tomorrow at 11:00 a.m., October 13th, right here in this room. The PVC, PVPC, Human Resource Regional Feasibility Group also met on September 29th to respond to the final draft of an RFQ that will, that it will issue to select a consultant to conduct the Human Resources Needs Survey of participating towns. It is expected that the project will continue into the next calendar year. It was originally scheduled to be concluded by the end of December and it's just a little behind schedule. So fortunately, they can extend it into the next calendar year. And then the Board of Health met on October 4th. It signed an agreement with tie and bond for the groundwater monitoring and report of the closed landfill at the transfer station. This report is, an annual report is required by the Department of Environmental Protection. It was reported that at Nora School, lunch and bus seats are assigned as a means of precaution to limit the potential exposure to COVID for students. A few contact tracings have been conducted at the school. There's been close communication between the contact tracer and school nurses. The Board of Health will get the word out regarding the availability of booster shots when that information is available and the locations. They're thinking of ways to spread the word to individuals who are less likely to use technology as a communication tool. And then on, according to the state's, September 30th, COVID reports, Southampton had 16 active COVID cases. And to report some good news, Southampton is a low risk for West Nile and triple E viruses. And good news for the kids at the school, there will be a trunk or treat program at Nora School parking lot so that the kids can celebrate Halloween this year. And the next meeting of the Board of Health is scheduled for November 1st. Finally, the Nora School Committee will be meeting again tomorrow. So I'll report that at our next meeting. Thank you.
Very good. Okay. All right. Joy?
So Conservation Commission met October 4th. Was it October 4th? The holidaying. No, this week was the holiday. I apologize. They met October 4th. And I think we pretty much went over everything in the Conservation Commission report besides we are now, they are now looking for a new member. So please apply if you are interested. And they are always looking for volunteers as well to help on the trails. Their next meeting is October 18th via Zoom at 6:00 p.m. That information is located on mytowngovernment.org. Planning Board met October, or met on October 6th. They went over mostly the bylaws and reviewing the new bylaws. I think they're on Section 7 in regards to driveways. Something very interesting that I think the Select Board should be aware is our new consultant is Mr. Richard Harris. He's excellent. And he went over kind of just in general, the difference between zoning bylaws and general bylaws and how the town may want to look at, some of the zoning bylaws determine what actions people can take on their property. I mean, want to change that to a general bylaw rather than a zoning bylaw because there are nonprofits and religious organizations that are exempt from zoning bylaws. So we need to consider that when we are looking at our zoning bylaws and our general bylaws. I thought that was very helpful to keep in mind. So that's something that we're going to go back and review for the Planning Board. And their next meeting is October 20th at 7:00 p.m. So we might be doing some more work with the Bylaw Committee and communicating with them. Housing Authority was scheduled the same day as Conservation Commission. So I was kind of, couldn't be in two places at once, so I was unable to make it to that meeting. My understanding though, is that they went over the community meeting and they're planning for the next one in November sometime soon. Their meeting, their next meeting is October 28th at 6:00 p.m. And then, as you heard from Cindy Palmer, the Open Space and what they're up to. I don't believe there is a next meeting on the books for Open Space, but there is a Friends of Open Space meeting tomorrow at Conant Park at 6:00 p.m.
Great. Okay, good. So Reenie can't be here tonight. She's out of town, but she asked that we fill in her report. So let me just find that.
You want me to do it?
We can. CPC, we've covered basically through Virginia, I think, pretty much, with the same information. Council on Aging is probably where you could start. If anyone do that.
Council on Aging met October 6th. The committee congratulated Joan Lenahan on receiving her official certification from the Massachusetts Association of Councils on Aging and Senior Center Directors. Received grant from HVES for a series of memory cafes. Congrats. First cafe is scheduled for October 21st, 10 to 12, at the Senior Center. Darlene Motica has resigned her position as Administrative Assistant. Many thanks to Darlene for her dedicated service to the Senior Center and our community's seniors. The COA is reviewing job responsibilities and needs of this position. Mr. David Parsons, a longtime Southampton resident and friend of the Senior Center, left funds in his will for a donation to the COA Senior Center, specific to the design and construction of a senior center. This is a specific request with a deadline of two years to initiate this project. If not initiated within two years, funds will be dispersed according to his will, with the COA Senior Center being one of the several beneficiaries. A subcommittee is forming to discuss and develop plans, including me, which would be Reenie. Cares Act update, discussion on additional needs, use of funds. Explained and discussed, the new committee, Cost Efficiency Ad-Hoc Committee, initiated by the Select Board, encourage members to consider joining the committee. Deadline giving of 10, 12 to put their name in. Next meeting, November 3rd. Board of Assessors met 10, 5, executive session only for a hearing and discussion of exemptions. Discussing evaluation and completing business of the office. New interim principal assessor has started. Next Board of Assessor meeting Tuesday, October 19th at 4:30 p.m. Public Safety Building Committee meeting planned for October 25th at 4:00 p.m.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right. And then from my part, basically, the Master Plan Implementation Committee? Yes, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes, please.
Jessica McConnell, 24 High Street. Can I just add, ask Ed a question?
Can I repeat your name again?
Jessica McConnell.
Okay.
24 High Street. Do I have to do that or is that just town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Select Board meetings, yes.
Thank you. Ed, you had caught the letter about the subcommittee, about going over ways to make the town more efficient, save money, et cetera. Are those going to be open meetings with attendance? Will the public be able to attend those?
Yes.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. And they'll be posted like regular meetings?
They should be, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so just a couple of brief ones for me. The Master Plan Implementation Committee is going to meet on October 13th at 7:00. And then the main thing we've been working, and I'll tie the Grants Committee in together. The Grants Committee and the Tech Committee have been working together on a grant application for the Community Compact IT Grant. I think we mentioned it a couple of weeks ago. The main topic is going to be cybersecurity, so improving our systems here at Town Hall. We've had a vulnerability assessment done, very, not a deep dive, but an overview of what are some of the basic things that need improving in terms of our security cyberwise here at town to protect us from information theft and ransomware and all those kinds of things that we hear about in the news all the time. And so we'll be applying for a grant. And the Tech Committee has actually done the bulk of the work already. They have done all the research and put the budget together and has just basically turned it over to the Grant Committee for a final look through. And between Ed and myself, we'll be working on submitting that grant application tomorrow. It's going to be for about $75,000. So that's what we have as our next agenda item to hopefully get some money for that purpose. Okay? So with that, I think that's the end of our grant and general reports. What I would like to suggest, since I see so many folks here from the library, I would like to make a suggestion that we change our order of business a little bit. We had them on tentatively at 7:00. We're running a little bit late. But would anybody mind if we moved up the Library Trustees' Discussion first before we went back to old business? Is that okay?
Absolutely not, that's fine.
All right. So with that in mind, we will entertain whomever would like to speak on behalf of the Library Trustees.
As we have to.
Good. And just introduce yourself and
Okay.
And if they have a quorum here, they should call their meeting to order.
Oh, yeah. Do we have a quorum? I don't know. Do you have a quorum?
We do, yep.
Then you should probably call your meeting to order then.
Okay. So Jessica Huffnagle, 74 Moosebrook Road. And we'll call the, how do I say this? The Library Trustees' Joint Meeting to Order. Okay. And it's just going to take me a moment to hopefully bring this up. Oh, look at that. It's magic. Okay.
Very good.
All right. So in your packets, you should have a handout that says "Mind the Gap" at the top. And just because I distrust technology a little bit, you also have a printout of the slides, just in case anything went wrong. So it's just a repeat of what you see up there. So as I mentioned, I'm Jessica Huffnagle. I am the Chair for the Board of Trustees at Edwards Library. And the trustees have asked me to talk to you about the GAP. This is the shorthand term the trustees have coined to explain the difference between the funding level that the state requires by law and the amount that a municipality actually appropriates for its library. So Southampton's GAP right now is $9,897 for fiscal year '22. To address that, we are asking the Select Board to submit an article for the next town meeting, which would authorize the Select Board to transfer an additional $9,897 to Edwards Library in order that Edwards can comply with the funding requirements of Massachusetts general law and thereby enable Edwards Library to maintain its state certification. In other words, to keep us from falling into that GAP. So I'm going to pause there to see, would you prefer that I take my mask off? Is the microphone picking me up okay?
I can hear you.
Everybody good? Okay.
I think we can hear okay.
So just a couple of, ha ha, there we go. There are a couple of terms that are critical to understanding the GAP. So first, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 78, Section 19a, provides that the state will determine the minimum amount at which a municipality such as Southampton must budget each year for its library. Failure to appropriate that mandate Failure to appropriate that mandated amount could result in the library losing its certification. Uh, the amount that the state determines is called the Municipal Appropriation Requirement or the MAR, which is how we refer to it. So, under the law, a library that is appropriated less than the MAR can lose its certification, unless it can obtain a waiver from the state. The gap is the difference between the MAR as calculated by the state and the amount of money the town actually grants the library through the budget process. So if the budget amount is less than the MAR, Edwards Library is in peril of losing its certification, unless it can obtain a waiver from the state, which comes with its own set of challenges. So I want to walk you through a little bit of that. So forgive me for this next slide, there are a lot of numbers there. Um, but I wanted you to kind of see a layout of how the MAR is calculated. So each year, the MAR is calculated based on the average of the preceding three years MARs. The average is then increased by 2.5%. So it's important to note that because the MAR is a function of the average of the previous three years, the MAR increase in the subsequent year is almost always less than 2.5% from the preceding year, usually just a little bit over 1%. So if Edwards is funded at the MAR every year, its budget request for the next year will call for a relatively modest increase to stay on that track. Um, as I mentioned before, we do have the option to apply for a waiver if the MAR is not met. Uh, but it's not guaranteed, it's not a gift, it comes with its own set of challenges. Uh, Mass General Law states that such a waiver may only be granted in a given fiscal year to not more than 10 cities and towns in the Commonwealth. Thus, there is no guarantee that Edwards will be granted a waiver. Um, last year, we did, uh, apply for and were granted a waiver due to pandemic conditions. Uh, we hope not to repeatedly depend on that kind of an emergency fix. And I do want to mention that last year, a lot of exceptions were made. The process was made a little bit easier, given that so many towns were in, um, that predicament. Um, so each year that the MAR is not budgeted, Edwards faces a significant challenge to its ability to continue to serve the people of Southampton. And that's why we want it to address. There's no guarantee that the Commonwealth will grant a waiver and a good chance that a waiver will not be granted in successive years. So once you get it once, it gets harder to get and that gap gets a little bit bigger. It's also a little bit more, a lot more than just, um, a financial or a budget, um, situation. So the most immediate impact of losing, uh, state certification is that Edwards would not be eligible for state aid to public libraries. In FY '21, that was $10,522. And it is the money that we get in state aid that provides us with the ability to pay our annual membership fee of $8,651 to Central and Western Massachusetts Resource Sharing, CWMARS, which is the 501(c) nonprofit corporation that allows Edwards to participate in all the statewide interlibrary programs that our community enjoys. This is what lets you download books that other libraries own or get an interlibrary loan. So it's a really important service, especially to small towns like Southampton. So it's important that before we talk about kind of the consequences of that certification, that we're also looking at, um, some of the services that, uh, the library has provided. So this data is based on FY 2019. Um, FY 2020 was not a typical year, uh, because of the COVID restrictions. So we wanted to give you a little bit better numbers to look at. So according to the Census Bureau, the population of Southampton in 2019 was 6,171. Our records show that in FY 2019, there were 1,976 residents who had library cards. That alone means that about 32% of our residents used Edwards Library. The actual number is likely to be higher as frequently a single library card is used by more than one person in a household. For example, in my household, my kids check out books on my card. So Edwards Library on its own and through its membership in CWMARS meets all tastes and preferences. In FY 2020, Edwards circulated 32,311 books, 2,582 print periodicals, 3,001 audiobooks, 19,912 downloadable items, so that's ebooks, that's online audiobooks, it's online magazines, and 11,447 videos. And our public computers were used over 1,900 times. The total circulation of all materials in FY 2019 was 55,805. And in addition, in FY 19, Edwards Library hosted 143 adult programs that were attended by a total of 1,200 people. It hosted seven young adult problem, uh, programs, not problems, maybe some of those, and 70 children's programs, programs serving over 1,900 attendees. So it is essential that children learn, um, to love to read because throughout our lives, after we learn how to read, we learn, we read to learn. And that is not limited to books. Um, as you may know, the Norris Library has been closed. I'm sure everyone in this room is aware of that. The Edwards Public Library is now our town's access to those services. Edwards Library is a money saver and makes books available to people at all income levels. So we actually got a really interesting number from, and it's up there and in your handout. According to CWMARS, our library patrons in Southampton saved over a million dollars in FY 2019, just based on the number of books and materials that were checked out. That's not even including the things that were downloaded. So, returning to the question of what would happen if Edwards Library were to lose its certification. First, if Edwards is funded below the MAR level and not able to secure a waiver, it would, it will not be certified to receive state aid to public libraries, which in FY '21 was just over $10,000. It brings us back to minding the gap. That is, avoiding falling behind with regard to municipal appropriation requirements, which we have come to known as the MAR. It is important to bear in mind, what is important to bear in mind is that the MAR is based on the average MAR for the preceding three years. It is not based on what the town actually appropriated. It is based on what the town was required to appropriate in accordance with Mass General Law. So with regard to the budget, the amount the municipality appropriates for the year after a waiver was granted must equal the MAR. That is, the average of the MAR for the preceding three years, not the average of what was actually appropriated. It's not a matter of just dollars, it's also a matter of maintaining certification. So, the library derives revenues from other sources, including contributions from our Friends Committee and state grants. But the MAR is the amount the municipality must fund in its budget. So we bring that up because a local philanthropist has volunteered to contribute the full amount of the MAR deficit. But that generosity cannot be counted as an offset for the MAR. The MAR must come from the municipality. Nor are we allowed to apply towards our MAR requirements the more than $20,000 a year that is raised by our volunteers donations, local businesses, the Friends of Edwards Library, the Mothers Club and other supporters. That money goes to pay for adult and children's programs, conferences, book carts, shelving, wifi, museum passes and other essential needs for our day-to-day operations. So I hope we have explained why the Edwards Library needs the town's support and why it is essential to our continued viability to mind the gap. The Trustees of Edwards Library thank you for allowing us to appeal to you to authorize a warrant that will give the residents of Southampton the opportunity to vote at town meeting on whether they want to fully fund Edwards Library at the minimum level required by the Commonwealth, so that our library's certification will not be in jeopardy. I hope you share our conviction that Edwards is a crown jewel of Southampton's educational and cultural heritage. All we ask is that Edwards Library will be able to continue to provide the people of Southampton with all the wonderful and vital services that we have discussed tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it. Great. Is there anybody else from the trustees who would like to speak before we entertain some questions? Or if not, we can move through. A few questions. You can all determine who wants to answer. Who would like to ask a question or two? I know I have a couple, but John?
I can go first. I just, um, maybe one, but maybe a couple clarifying questions. Can you tell me, who prepares the TAMI, the Total Appropriate Municipal Income for, and certifies it?
Who prepares the TAMI?
Well, your, your document says...
Come on up to the mic, please.
The Municipal Appropriation Requirement is the formula you saw that's set by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. The TAMI is what the town appropriates. It's a town, that's what it stands for. It's a town appropriation. What the town has appropriated.
It's town, not total. Total appropriated.
No, it's the town, I forget what, you know, it breaks down to, but it's what, what the town votes at the annual meeting to give the library in its budget.
All right. So I guess specifically I'm going to MU12. Where it says, enter your fiscal year 2022 projected total appropriate municipal income, TAMI, as reported on the fiscal year 2022 financial report. So my question is, what is that financial report?
But you're just questioning, is the word total or town?
Well, if there is a financial report, I'd like to see it because I assume there's more details in it. And did the town accountant certify it? Is it done by the Board Trustees?
Um, it was voted on at the Select Board meeting when the budget was prepared, wasn't it?
But a financial report, what this is referring to is...
Oh, hmm. Oh, oh, the financial report's what I fill out, what the director fills out for the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. I just handed mine in. There's two state reports. The ARIS is the statistics, which you saw, and the financial report is a money report. How much did we spend on books? How much did we spend on utilities? Everything you could possibly imagine we spent on is in that.
Gotcha. So it's, it's a report that you fill out annually as the director of the library? And then you certify it and send it to the state?
Well, Jessica signs it, the chair, I sign it. It's sent to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners along with the copy of the budget that the town voted on. And, um, let's see, I think that's mostly what it is, yeah. And this actually comes from that report.
Right. Is it possible to get the last two years of that?
Oh, I have them in the office.
Can you swing by and pick them up?
Yeah. I'd have to copy it for you.
Let's put them over to Ed and he can circulate them to everybody.
Okay, so I'd have to copy it. I printed it out so I can make you copy for the last two years?
Yep.
That'd be great. Very good. Great. Then we can all see what the difference is here. So you did, um, apply for a waiver, if I'm understanding, and got the waiver last year. And that was not terribly difficult? Or I know you said that it was an easier process perhaps?
Well, it wasn't. The waiver process was no different. But because of the pandemic, over, I think 50, about 50 libraries received a waiver. And because of the pandemic, um, they, you know, usually they don't give that many, as Jessica said.
Right. And so, in your mind, you don't see any, what, any, any advantage or any, not an advantage, but you don't really want to go for a second year in a row for a waiver, is what I'm...
Well, you know, if we have to, but the problem is the gap. So every year you don't get your, you know, requirement, it's much harder to get the requirement the next year. Because the town would have to come up with even more.
And isn't there something that when they grant the waiver, they don't rub out the number that you should have achieved? Gets added to subsequent years? So the rate you pay later for the benefit of the waiver in previous years, it does get rolled in.
Right. And there's a whole process. If you get too many waivers, they end up calling Ed and me and a bunch of other people into Boston, unless of course it's on Zoom. But there's a whole process and that's why not very many libraries lose their certification. Hamden, Convy was part of that one. I mean, you were aware then. Um, Hamden was the last one I know of in Western Mass and it was 15 to 20 years ago. And Wareham lost it and it's taken them four years to get their certification back.
Wow. Okay.
They do it on purpose so the towns will support the libraries.
Yeah, okay, good.
So you won't have all, all books on the shelves.
Right. Yeah, all right, go ahead, please.
Jessica McConnell, 24 High Street. I have a question regarding how the library got in this situation. Like Norris Elementary has a certain dollar amount that we have to fund or we're, but once again, the state requires us to fund a certain amount. The library has the same kind of number. So if there is a requirement out there, how come that requirement managed to not be met? Because it seems like this would be like something, when they're, when the budget is created, is a known entity and it's like, kind of like when you pay the health insurance, it's a, a dollar number you have to hit. So I'm just wondering how we got here and how we don't get here again.
That I'm not sure. Um, I'll entertain that question, but again, I'd like this to be questioned mostly from the Select Board. It's, it's a presentation to us for consideration, but Jessica, if you can answer any of that, please. Any of it, any idea? Or anybody? You can go to the mic, please. Introduce yourself and come to the mic.
Sam Convy-Stall, 14 Jonathan Judge Circle. I think it became, began because the town was in dire needs of cutting budgets and it tried to do it across the board as favorably as possible. Um, I, when I watched the budget meeting, it, they looked for the money, but there wasn't the money there and that, that was the problem. Now we're coming forth, now we're going to have, I'm going to use the term free cash. I know that may not be the exact term that you use. We're going to have this free cash and then it now allows the town to say, oh, we have a little bit of extra money. Let us go back and those areas that we should have funded, at least minimally, now we can do that. And so that's, that's why we're here. You know, if we can get, if we get the $9,882 into our budget, we're going to get $10,000 back. And it also means that next year, our MAR is not going to be made higher because we had a waiver. And I think that's the point that we have to think about. We're just going to dig ourselves in a bigger hole and ask you for more money.
Yeah, no, thank you. I think that point was clear too, between the two of you. Because I, I just assumed, well, I was making a wrong assumption. You know, I wasn't ensuring, uh, assured of the impact of not having, uh, you know, the waiver, what it meant to, to have that two years in a row and what that might mean for a bigger amount of money that you had to deal with in the subsequent year. So, yeah, go ahead, Jessica.
Oh, I just was, if you have any other questions.
Could you go back to that slide that has all the, all the numbers on it?
I think, I can.
Or maybe not.
That big, um...
Yeah, that one. Okay. So, I guess I was confused and maybe you can just, when I looked at the 1, 2, 3, MU8. Okay, so the middle line there, the 167, 681. So whichever is higher, the FY '20, which is 166, 135, right? Or the TAMI?
Yes.
In your calculation, I just want to be sure that if you're coming to us for money for the budget, that you're giving a, a correct, accurate number for yourselves so that you don't have a shortfall. Because when I looked at it, and maybe I'm just looking at it wrongly, my calculation came out a little bit less. But I was putting in the 163 plus 166 twice. Isn't that how that's calculated? Because I came up with 9, 3, 6, 9 as my shortfall.
You would put in the 167, 68, not the 166, 135 twice?
Right. But it says FY 2021, TAMI.
Chris, if I could take a stab at it?
Okay, then just, the MU8 though is, but it's referring, I understand which is higher. I got that part on the MU8. But it's in MU8, that definition is using the FY 2020 MAR. Which, isn't that the 166, 135 above? Or am I not, that's not the MAR on the second line up there? So whichever's higher, the FY 2020 MAR or the TAMI?
On line MU5.
Which is 21.
Which is, which, which is 167, 681.
That's a very convoluted way to say that, in my brain. But anyway, okay. If you're, if you're comfortable with the figures, fine. I just want to be sure you don't, don't cheat yourselves.
We actually didn't do this chart. This is from the Mass Board of Library Commissioners.
Okay, well.
So there's a mistake, we're in big trouble.
Okay. All right, John, did you?
No, that's what I was going to say. You take, you take the first three, first three numbers, you add them up and divide by three to get your average. And if that number is higher, then the 21, we use that. Yeah.
No, I got that. It's just, what was confusing to me is this FY 20 MAR in that, you know, under the MU8 line. The instructions don't...
We debated even putting this up because it is so convoluted, but, you know, we wanted to share what we're working with.
With the 9, 8, 9, 7 as your bottom line figure that you need, I'll, I'll go with your, your figure. I'm not going to suggest differently.
One of my other questions was the funding source for this. So I heard free cash, but I would anticipate that we're not going to have free cash certified for quite some time. So is there an alternative funding source thinking that free cash will not be on the table until sometime in the late spring, if that's the case?
And you said you, you've got a benefactor, but that's not going to count because it's not a municipal...
It's municipal support, yeah.
There's absolutely no money available. No, no. The alternative would be operational stabilization, which requires a two-thirds vote.
Could I ask a question since you have the mic? However, is it plausible that if there's an existing line item that was appropriated at a higher amount than is actually needed and had funds available in it, that we could do a transfer by town meeting?
It is, because actually one of the possible town meeting articles will be to transfer funds within the police department for that purpose.
Okay.
So that would prevent those having to go separate?
Right. And so, and again, just to reiterate, just so I'm hearing as part of the grants committee this time, wearing my hat, there's no saving grace really to get something as a grant from some library association, whatever, that that is not going to count toward this problem?
No. We looked at that.
I spoke with the Mass Board, I'm on the phone.
Come on up a little bit so people can hear you, please.
And I said, "Look, what if I could get Warren Buffett to donate money?" And she said, "You can ask all you want. It's not going to happen. It has to come from within your town." And I said, "I can't believe that. Why can't I, why can't we just have him donate? Donate to the town, and then the town will just appropriate?" No, that is not the way it can be done. Trust me. I thought for sure we had this all taken care of, and they assured me.
Okay. All right, well, that's good, okay. We explored the options then, okay. Anybody have any other questions? I don't think at this point in time, I'm not going to recommend that we do much further discussion or any kind of, you know, voting on this. I think this is a consideration that we'll have to discuss as we go along. But it's helpful to have the presentation tonight and understand, you know, the predicament you're in, and we are in as a town, and the impact of that. So I think that's very helpful to have come and presented that to us tonight.
Yeah, and at which time it's appropriate, we'll draft, you can draft an article for the special town meeting for consideration for the warrant.
We're looking at having one. We'll be discussing that later tonight, but we're looking at having one before the end of the year. So, you know, that, this is timely in that regard.
I just wonder, is there a deadline that we should be aware of from there?
From your end, yeah, that was going to be another question.
So, the deadline is, we're already there, so we are applying for the waiver because we have to get that going, but it can be overturned. And actually, part of the waiver application says, what are you, are you working with your town to try to remedy this today? Yeah.
All right.
So, so it's passed, but we still have some time. Is there a hard deadline after that? Sorry, you just sat down.
Barbara Golden, Director. I did talk to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners, and if we get the money anytime, the waiver, you know, the whole thing is dropped. But we do have to fill out the application. And quite a few towns do this. That's what the advice was.
Kind of do things simultaneously, hoping that one or the other will come through, yeah, okay.
I have just one last question. If, so none of the donation wouldn't, doesn't count? And I can see why you don't want one, because even then, the next year, you still have to make up that difference. If there was, you know, just to buy some time, a donation to cover the next two years, and then, so we can appropriate, no?
No, it still would affect certification, and we would put the money to good use, I'm sure, but it wouldn't help with the certification.
If you did get a waiver for this year, and then hopefully, it wouldn't be such a jump for the next year.
Yes, but it still creates that widening gap for the town, yeah.
It's just a bigger gap. Okay, good. All right, if no other questions, we thank you very much for the presentation. Very informative, gives us something to think about. There's definitely some new things that I did not know, so, yeah. Have you got something else you'd like to say?
Oh, I have one last question. Does the, does the trust, does the board have a liaison?
Uh, no, not to the board of trustees, no.
Yeah, I would volunteer just so that we can make sure that this is moving along.
A couple of us, Francine, I know since they, with them, we don't have an official liaison.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure, just, I just want to make sure that this gets addressed.
Okay, very good, yeah, Convy, please. Yeah, just come close to the mic so we can hear you, that's all.
For clarification, you're going to take our presentation under consideration? You will be making the decision within the next month or so?
We've got to, because we'll be talking about what articles are going to be on the warrant. If we're going to have the special town meeting in maybe early December, we've got to be deciding pretty quickly what are going to be the warrant articles. And so we would come back to you, I'm sure via Ed, to talk about that.
And would there be any reason why you would not recommend this for a town meeting? I mean, what would prevent you from doing that?
Firstly, for me, not right now, no.
I can just speak for myself. I just want, I'm very familiar with net school spending, and that's what you were referencing with the library calculation. Now I understand it's a rolling three-year average with the percentage. I want to see the details behind it. I know that you can't put capital in there, and I just need to see the facts and figures behind it. And I think, the other thing that's going on here, separate from you folks, is the fact that Norris has closed its library. Norris's library will be closed next year. And at the end of next year, if the funding that was cut this year isn't restored, all the ester money will be gone, and additional positions will be cut from the school. So that really leaves us, if you guys lose accreditation and the schools don't have accreditation with the libraries, there's no libraries left in town for a population of over, you know, 700 kids. So that's an issue, it plus the adults. I think there might be options here down the road to explore things, maybe a collaboration between the schools and Edwards and...
Yes, and we do some of that.
We can take, we can bring it up tomorrow night with our new business.
Yeah, that'd be fun. Yeah, no, we'll definitely...
And I'm asking this because if it's going to go to town meeting, that we need to do some preparation in getting information out to the townspeople. And so we would like at least, at least a couple weeks' notice so that we can prepare the adequate publication.
And there will be assistance in writing the article for the warrant, yeah.
Yes, oh, yes, please.
Yeah, exactly. Because usually any of the articles that we draft here, they end up going down to our legal counsel to review before they make it on the warrant for a town meeting, so we'd be all clear on that as well. But given that we're, you know, our time is running short before the end of the year, and given possible time, town meeting dates with holidays intervening, and the amount of lead time, we need to be able to post a warrant for a special town meeting. You know, we've got to make some decisions in the next two to three weeks, for sure.
Okay, and so you'll be notifying us?
We'll get back in touch with you, yeah.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, just, and if you would, yeah, the reports that John was requesting, we can pass those around to Ed, and we'll get them circulated to us, yeah.
This is the report, he was asking, this is the detail of how it's calculated, step by step, so I don't know if that's...
Oh, okay, all right. But I think you were looking for the last two or three years of the financial report. So if you would, if you need, mail that to Ed, and then we'll get it circulated.
I have to talk to you?
Oh, okay. Just bring it over to Ed, and he'll, he'll do it.
Figure it out.
He'll do it.
You'll have to scan it, Barbara.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Would the library board of trustees like to adjourn their meeting?
That would probably be a good idea. All right, very good. Welcome. So thank you again for coming, all right. Great, so we'll get back quickly on our old business, the agenda. We'll get back on track here. Now the room empties out. Now the room empties out. Great, okay, very good. Okay, Ed, if you would like to jump in on old business and give us a little bit of an update on where we are with the audit?
We have a number of questions from the auditors that I am currently working on answering. I believe the treasurer has finished answering all of hers, so just trying to get through that and get them the responses that they, they need.
And your goal is to do that by what, by when?
I'd like to finish it up next week, so. It's just a question of if I can find all the information to digest it and respond to them.
Are these more unusual questions than we usually get? Or are they sort of some of the same, same old stuff that an auditor would normally ask, or are they looking for something?
It's just, it's usual questions, it's just, okay, going back and actually finding out why that is the way it is. And some of them are probably easy, and then other ones are going to take a little longer to actually do the research on it, back through 20.
All right, any questions, thoughts? Moving on to the annual audit contract, I guess is the next bullet item on here?
So, is this referring to potentially going out the bid for another three-year contract?
Yes, I think so.
So I'd like to suggest that we move forward with not holding the audit, and we go to town meeting, special town meeting, and request a leave from the bylaw for one year only. And reallocate those funds to paying somebody to come in and clean up the 21, so not to burden the current staff with it. How we do all that, I leave to the chair.
Now, you discussed that with the auditing firm. Has that been discussed with our attorneys to make sure that...
I...
What the auditors say, what Massachusetts General Law says are one and the same?
Right.
I've only discussed it as far as the public meeting here. I didn't go outside this meeting.
It would be our bylaws, not the Mass General Laws.
Okay.
All right. Well, we haven't, I guess it ties into the notion of whether we're going to bring in somebody. We've identified a couple of possibilities, but we have had no luck in getting hold of them yet, right?
Actually, when I left Jessica at the podium before the meeting, Eric did get back to me. So, he is, his firm is very busy right now. He said that he probably would not be able to start on anything until sometime in November. He did say that he would check, and I'm going to still send him some more information on it just in case we follow up and decide to utilize them in November. But he's also going to check and see if there's anybody that he may recommend to us other than his own firm that may be able to help us out with this.
Now, was that the second reference from Francine, or was that the new lead that we got from the bank?
No, this is the one that Francine had found, or Chris.
And we've also got the information that Jen sent, Jen Day sent to us also.
And at this point, though, we don't have an idea what that might cost us, right? Because as John's talking about, not doing the audit, using that money to shift around to cover this, if I'm not mistaken, we've got like $21,000 or something in the budget for audit. We don't have a clue whether that covers half all or anything at this point. We don't have a cost estimate of anything, right, to know...
We do not.
Whether that's worth talking about at this point?
And I would say part of that is my fault, because Ed has been after me every day to get with him to develop the scope, so he can send it out, and my schedule just hasn't allowed free time.
Yeah, okay.
So I'll make a point to get that done by the middle of next week, so that we can get an estimate.
Yeah, I mean, November's not that far away.
Just to think about an alternative, if Ken Scherff can't do it, when I spoke with him, he also mentioned Melanson, but we were in a bind with them because they were our auditors. They couldn't do the work. Now, if we take a pause in our auditing arrangement with them, could they then be the likely providers of this interim service?
Yes, they just would not be able to audit us for any particular year that they gave us accounting services.
Right, but if we bypass the audit for 21, then I think we're okay, if I understand the correct...
Right, and then for due diligence, I say, you know, since we, it seems like we have three potential possibilities, that we ask all three of them for the...
Right, for cost estimates, I mean, that's what I would want to do.
Absolutely.
And then, but if I'm hearing you correctly, so if, for example, Melanson was the one that was, the one to come in and work on the 21 books, and we forego the audit for that year, we would still need to go out and put out the RFP, as you suggested last time, I think, for, in a three-year audit contract?
For 2022.
22.
22 going forward.
Yes.
Correct.
They could bid on that, along with other...
Yes, we just, we just wouldn't have to do it at this time. We could do it later in the year.
I mean, we don't have to hurry up and get an audit contract in place either, right? Okay, that's...
And of course, the other alternative is we aren't able to postpone the fiscal year 21 audit and have to do it if we've hired Melanson. We'll have to go out and find another firm to, probably, and I don't know if we'll find anybody interested in doing one year.
Just one year?
Right, right.
That's a challenge, okay.
The budget number, I think there's two line items in the budget, unless it's consolidated. There's the audit, and then there's the OPEB audit.
Two separate items.
Right, so we could combine those two-dollar amounts.
Could we, really?
Yeah, so you can bypass that one as well?
Well, you don't do an OPEB audit unless you have audited the auditions.
No, the OPEB audit is done separately, so.
It's not part of their normal audit?
It's done by an actuarial piece, so.
It's not part of what Melanson would normally do.
They don't provide it?
No.
It's a separate firm?
It's a separate audit, yes.
So, again, you know, I go back to, this is pretty more work on the sitting treasurer, but, you know, the Department of Local Services has an excellent program for towns under 10,000 where the treasurer can perform the OPEB audit. And Scott, the deputy director at DLS, he wrote the manual on it. It's just other things to look at, but...
Yeah, we should.
I also think that if you're, if we're, I keep suggesting, only because of my background, you keep loading up the treasurer, but, you know, you have to adjust compensation there too, which is a separate subject.
Right, yeah.
The two go hand in hand.
Oh, they do, and, you know, again, again, some of these topics, I do feel, get into our future committee there as we, as we talk about those things, that, you know, what makes sense to be more efficient and cost-effective too in town.
I guess if I could ask for point of order, because I don't know the process. What would be the process to request a leave of a bylaw for one year from the citizens?
It would be a town meeting article, probably drafted by Copelman.
Do you need a motion by a select board member to do that?
I would guess so, yes.
We need to, I'd like to see the bylaw that it's in first. Bylaws committee is meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
I suggest that maybe the bylaws committee take a look at this and bring it forward to our next meeting on the 26th, and we can have a further discussion and take a vote at that point in time, as to whether that makes sense to...
I also need to know, like, is there far more reaching effects, ripple effects, that we're not considering too? I'm not opposed to it, I just need to, we need to know, like, is it going to affect, you know, approvals, loans, interest rates, et cetera, et cetera? All of these other contracts that we may have, that we have already agreed to do an audit every year if we agree to take borrow money, things like that.
The existing debt says that you have to do it, that part of the ongoing, continuing disclosures of your existing debt, if it's in there, which it more than likely is if there's any seven-figure debt out there, six figures may not have it, is that you agree to continue to do these audits. But you also continue to keep the Moody's rating. Unless, under MGL, and I forget the number of it because I brought it two weeks ago, you go through the State House note program, and then we're not issuing any debt. We're assigning all our debt to the Commonwealth, and we're coming under the Commonwealth's rating. So therefore, we're just transferring our risk or our liability over to them.
And their rating was basically the same as ours?
Same as the town, and we're not paying $11,000 for a Moody's rating every year. And we're getting the same credit rating.
Honestly, I would recommend that before we take a vote on this, that we have a written opinion from whomever, whether it's DLS, or it's our own town council, or maybe the auditors, but whatever voices we need to be listening to in order to make the right decision here.
Just to be sure that there's not some hidden, hidden something.
Because Joy's right, there could be repercussions. You make a decision in favor of one thing, and then you roll downhill a little bit, and you run into, yeah.
And I agree, and I think we're going to need all those documents in order to convince the population to give us this pass.
Yes, okay. So let's hold off until, let's have that on the agenda for the October 26 meeting, and hopefully we'll have gathered some more information. So from the bylaws point of view, you'll, you'll take a look at the bylaw itself and see what that wording is, and then, once we find that, maybe Ed, you could touch base with our legal counsel, and if that's what you think is the appropriate one to opine upon this?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Do you have any particular thoughts yourself? Do you have any particular thoughts yourself about the, the idea of bypassing a year in terms of the audit? I mean, is that something you've dealt with in your previous iterations?
I have worked in communities that didn't necessarily do it every year. I mean, it's, it's nice and it actually may be, you know, cheaper in the long run if you don't skip a year. But like I said, if it's just one year and that's it, that's one thing. If you're like starting to skip every other year or whatever, it's, in my opinion, something totally different.
Okay, all right. So let's hold off on this until the next meeting and we'll move forward with that. All right. All right, good. Moving on, Ridge Water Main update.
And like I said, the, the water department met with the contractor out there and the engineer a couple of weeks ago and went through the punch list, so at this point, it's just waiting for the vendor to, or the contractor to schedule that work and come back and do everything on the punch list, which I expect to see just about anytime now.
And the E Street Bridge update.
Like I said, later this week, I expect that the directional drilling will start to move the gas line off the bridge. At this point, after talking with John Furman at VHP, I don't foresee actual, any construction of starting to demolish or set up there for the actual construction on the bridge itself for probably another couple of weeks. And before they actually start, we will, we'll have a regular pre-construction meeting and they will also have to have their erosion control in place for the actual bridge work at that, that point in time, and the Conservation Commission will have to approve of that erosion control methodology in place before they actually start the construction.
Okay.
Correct.
And do you envision at this point that they would probably close off E Street right at Clark Street so people could at least go around the park and then Strong Road would be open or we don't know yet?
The anticipated detour is yes, close off the bridge and Strong Road would be open and Clark Street would be open.
Okay.
As the detour route.
That's the theory right now, anyway.
Yes.
Good, good to know. Okay. Any other questions about old business on that? All right, hearing none, well, let's keep on moving to the new business. Down to the special town meeting date, we look like we have two possibilities given the holidays and so forth, looking at December 7th or December 14th. And both the dates and location and advance times, all of those things I think are open for some discussion tonight. So Robert, would you like to give us some information from your point of view?
I thought you'd never ask, Robert Floyd, College Highway. I've been thinking about this, if you have the town meeting on December 7, you only have two scheduled meetings before then. That's not a lot of time with the board's history. If you meet on the 14th, you double your meetings, you have four. So either the 14th, which gives you a lot of breathing room, the preference is December 7, I would, I would recommend you consider adding another meeting, maybe the second, because you have to sign it on November 9, assuming you're keeping your Tuesday meetings according to plan. So you have to sign the warrant for a December 7 meeting on November 9. And adding a meeting December 2nd, November 2nd, gives you wiggle room, gives you more time to get answers to your questions. You're going to have to have a call for articles and you're going to have to have a deadline. So there's some work to be done.
True, but if we waited until the December 14th, then our signing time would be the 16th?
23rd.
23rd.
And that gives you four meetings between now and the 14th.
Big difference.
Yeah.
Yes.
How, but there's only one week of time.
No, it's a logic, it's, it's your meeting every other week and the meetings are together, the 7 and 14 only one week apart.
I got you.
Okay.
Well, right now, the only, the regularly scheduled meetings would be the 26th of October and then the 9th of November, that's two meetings. The 23rd is actually too late because it's got to be posted 14 days ahead of time and the 23rd is the 14th day.
For the 7th.
For the 7th.
Right.
So it would have to be the 14th.
I would open it up for signing it on the 23rd for the 14th and give you another regular scheduled meeting.
And Madam Chair, I'd like to extend an invitation for Joy and John to ask questions in general about town meetings. This is my first time in front of you both.
Yeah.
I thought of something to present tonight. If you schedule a town meeting and you forget to add an article or there's an emergency, you can schedule another special town meeting a week or two in advance down the road and then ask people not to show up for the first scheduled special town meeting. The moderator simply adjourns to the second date and essentially you have two town meetings on one date and you satisfy everything. Sort of like an alley pass in basketball. And the other thing, while you're laughing, you've been concerned historically as, as good about citizens petitions, keeping every single word the same. What can be done when they're improperly or illegally written is to have your own article with the same substance as the citizen's petition and put it right in front of the citizen's petition, properly worded with the same substance, whether it passes or fails, dealing with the next article is, you know, is homework and it's this way, it's another thing that can be done. If you do pick the 7th or the 14th, we need a weather date or opportunity if someone wants to make a motion to adjourn to a date certain, to get more information from the town or whatever. So you need to consider to decide whether it's going to be the next day, the 8th or the 15th, or it's going to be the next Tuesday, which would be the 14th for the 7th meeting or the 21st for the 14th meeting, which then gets you flirting with Christmas.
I guess it's very close to the holidays, yeah.
So maybe having it the next day would satisfy that.
And remind me why we're zeroing in on December? I think there's a reason, but.
Yes, the, the grant for the Parks Commission requires a town meeting vote.
And I would also ask you to consider having as many articles as possible to get them done with, because who knows what's going to happen for a special in the winter, whether we need one or not, and we don't want to load up the annual, look what happened this past one outdoors, everybody was good enough to stay past the three hours, it was wonderful.
Sure, yeah.
So anyway, if we're going to be meeting and if we're going to be meeting indoors and it's safe to meet indoors, then an extra period of time won't hurt. And to answer a question earlier, if and only if the 100,000 for the CPA is mandated by the state, a citizen's petition would simply show the favor of the town. There'd be no mandate since it's not a town law.
Correct.
If it was something we could change, yes, but looking at my limited experience, I have seen no record in the Commonwealth that that's happened. They've changed it from 3% to 2, 1 to 3, but not the minimum.
Interesting. Okay, good to know. All right.
And again, on citizen petitions, you need 10 for an annual, you only need 100 signatures. You need more, you need 100 signatures for a special.
For a special. Okay, John.
Ed, you're supposed to be recognized. Sorry, Ed.
I do have one recommendation that differs from Robert's. Due to the COVID and coming into the holiday season of Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year's, my recommendation is to keep the articles to as few as possible.
That sounds, I can live with that.
Keep, you know, theoretically, maybe the.
Maybe a dozen at most.
I was, I was going to suggest maybe about eight, you know, so, yeah, to make eight or 10.
We were close to what, 30 almost at the.
Make it easier to social distance.
And I don't disagree, but on my concept, so we're sitting there already, a little extra time to get rid of these articles on our back shelf would be judicious to proceed, but I do certainly position between Thanksgiving and Christmas, I give you that.
Yeah, okay. All right.
And there will be an information session, which we've done every year, every town meeting, Thursday, a week and a half-ish before a town meeting, the moderator sits here and reads the articles. Last year, it needed help, there were so many, and that gives people a heads up on what's going to be.
Plus, there was one that was about 11 pages long.
Right. Voice is cracking.
Okay, well, do we want to talk about location first as well as we talk about a date, because what do we know for our availability anywhere?
I recommend indoors.
Yeah, I think so too.
I have shot an email off to Nora School asking for the availability for the 7th and the 14th, and I have not heard anything back yet, but I.
It's on the agenda tomorrow night for the school committee to reverse its policy to open up the school, so there'll be a discussion as to whether or not to open the school and potentially maybe just open the school for the town meeting nights, maybe it has to do, SIAA is involved as well in consideration, so.
I saw that on one of the school committee updates, I kind of thought that that might be the case, so.
Push comes to shove, we have the legal right to have it at Hampshire Regional High School, but I'd rather not have everybody driving at night in the dark the next town.
Yeah, okay. Well, at this point in time.
That's an interesting alternative.
Yeah.
And we almost came to it once when we had 567 people.
Really?
That showed up and we had two rooms and Deputy Moderator and I had rehearsed and the TV cameras, I mean, it worked well. We had discussions on the different mic and voting and runners between rooms, and when it got down to the article, they all came from the second room into the first room. And the former moderator gave me great compliments, but 567 people.
I wonder, are we prohibited from having it on a Saturday?
No, we used to have it on Saturday morning.
Just to, to the point, if it's Hampshire Regional, if we went down that road, would it make more sense to have it on noon on a Saturday in the middle of December than at 6 o'clock or 5 o'clock at night?
Right, that would work, sure, that's a better, yeah, alternative.
If we had to go.
For that drive.
And sorry for not, I'm listening, but I don't want to forget this, very important. We had a governor's directive to weigh in on changing the quorum last year or two. We don't have that now, I believe that's no longer on the table, I think, so we have 50. So we certainly have to have enough articles to enhance at least 50 to come and stay the whole process.
Okay. All right.
From the looks of tonight, we get 50 from the library. Make it the last article.
Better off simply calling people than posting.
Exactly. Well, I mean, hearing everything that's been said here, it strikes me that we need to give ourselves as much time as possible to get prepared and get all the articles. We have an idea of a couple of them probably, but not everything that may be out there that people are looking for to present to us. And in all fairness, we need to be able to put out a call for articles to people and let them know that we will be having this meeting. So I think my preference right now would be to aim for the 14th, but I'm wondering about the, I almost feel like two possible days, 14th if we could do it maybe at Norris, maybe the 18th if we had to do it at Hampshire Regional. I mean, I don't know if we can make that kind of broad motion at this point in time. What's anybody think about that?
The 18th would be a Saturday.
Yeah. I mean, in your experience, is attendance better for a Saturday meeting than a Tuesday night?
Good question. Saturday mornings were really good. I didn't like them as much because it's early in the morning, I liked the evening ones, sorry very much, but we had, excuse me, childcare. In fact, historically, we had the elections in the afternoon, it was a picnic, I mean, way back. I think that, I believe, there's a danger in this situation where you go from an established Tuesday evening to a Saturday. It catches everybody unprepared and as Ed brought up, you have a lot of holiday seasons going on and getting 50 people on a Saturday morning, I believe is going to be harder than Tuesday, but then again, who knows? That's, we don't have that.
Be more midday-ish like John suggested.
But it was changed, Francine, to answer your question, it was changed more for personal reasons, for children's ballgames on a Saturday afternoon, convenience, it wasn't any attendance at all. The attendance were decent in the morning.
All right, what's anybody's thoughts? Would anybody like to make a motion about possible date that we can kind of nail down tonight? Are we ready to do that? I think we kind of need to.
I would like to propose that we shoot for the 14th at Norris, and if that does not pass with the committee, that we then hold the 18th and approach Hampshire Regional as a potential alternate venue.
With, I'd add a weather date or a back, a second day date down the 15th. And if it was a Saturday, we probably wouldn't be meeting on a Sunday, so we'd be meeting on that Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. That might be a challenge to you with school.
Monday wouldn't work on a school.
It's a complicated motion.
Yeah.
No, until you get to the next week, because then the school's closed.
Right, so then you're really into the holiday? Well, I mean, you know, even with our lengthy meetings and lengthy articles, we haven't had to go over, and if, as Ed suggests, we keep it kind of modest in terms of the number of articles. We ought to be able to.
Yeah, I've, I've been here for 20 years of town meeting articles of the select board and there have been some horror stories. I would recommend you consider, even if you don't decide what date right now, is adding the 2nd for a possible meeting. And this gives you more time to churn out whatever articles there are and still be able to live with, let's say, the 7th. And then you can change your mind and say, we're not meeting on the 2nd and we're going to have the town meeting on the 14th and we'll, we'll sign it on the 23rd.
Yeah, well, the 2nd, yeah, that's a Thursday, right?
No.
November 2nd.
November 2nd, sorry, thank you, Francine. November. So for me, it gives you options by thinking you might meet that day.
Yeah. Okay.
Otherwise, it'll go by the boards and you're stuck with the 14th.
It almost sounds like we should do the 7th as our primary and the 14th as our backup, because then the next week is Christmas week.
Right.
So that we only have those 10 days to work within.
Right.
If we're going to, I mean, we're going to meet in December. And maybe the 7th is primary, 14th is backup, both Tuesday nights, preferably at Norris, but in the event that we can't do Norris, then we go to Hampshire Regional, which means Hampshire Regional in the evening.
And I would say that we pencil in November 2nd as a meeting date for the select board.
This would be wearing masks, you know, social distance.
Boy, November, December 7th seems very, very close though, but we could, so that gives us one, two.
It goes quickly.
Three meetings before? Is that right? The 26th, the 2nd, the 6th, or the 9th?
Three, yes.
Well, actually, you're, you're on point, but you have to sign it for December 7th meeting, you would have to sign, sign on November 9. If you met on December, on November 2nd, you would have the 26th, the 2nd and the 9th to process the articles and sign on the 9th for December 7th.
I mean, unless I overbook my calendar, I have that we're meeting. I mean, unless I overbook my calendar, I have that we're meeting every Tuesday. Now, the off Tuesdays are executive sessions.
The off Tuesdays.
We could tack something in there if we, if we needed to.
Right.
Right? We've already committed to being here to try and clear all those things up.
Yes. Yeah, no, November 2nd's not an issue for me. I'm just worried about, that gives us two real meetings before we have to finalize and sign a warrant.
And you haven't even called for the articles yet.
We haven't called for the articles, they won't have gotten through K P Law. I mean, I'm just.
Ooh, that's a, that's a great point. There you go. That, that does it.
I don't see how we can do that. I think I.
And a meeting on the 2nd.
I'd go with the 14th and the 15th as a weather date. And then call for, call for the articles to be back by November 4th at noon.
November 4th. On the Thursday? Okay, so the 14th is a Tuesday.
Mm-hmm, yes.
No date, the 15th? Okay, that, I.
I never said that word. I only said weather.
I didn't.
Yeah.
But then, okay, so then articles in.
November 4th.
By November 4.
At noon.
At noon, to my office.
November 4th at noon.
Primary location would be Norris, secondary would be Hampshire Regional.
Yeah, that'd be fine. And then that gives us then scheduling the November meetings for October, sorry, November 2nd, November 9th, and the 23rd?
Well, you don't need to consider November 2nd as a possible meeting date if you're going to choose the 14th of December.
But we may be doing an executive session anyway, so that's, that's fine, it just gives us that much more. Okay, could we have a motion then to suggest our special town meeting to be set for December 14th in the evening? We usually do what time around?
7.
Around 7? December 14th at 7:00 PM, and an extension date if needed on December 15th. Primary location at Norris, secondary location at Hampshire Regional.
With a, with a call for articles by November 4th at noon to Ed's office.
And a call for articles into Ed's office by noon on November 4th.
I'll make that motion.
All right.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Sophia.
Thank you.
That will at least move us forward a little bit. Thank you.
Cheers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Robert.
Okay, good. Okay, and next on the agenda, we have our fire chief to request a review of paramedics' pay rates. So John, please come on up.
Okay, I know after following library and all that we're talking about, I know the town is not in the greatest position financially, and unfortunately, I don't have tremendous news. One of the bigger challenges that are facing EMS service in the state as a whole is that we're having shortcomings in personnel available for paramedics and EMT basics. And like the pandemic, Southampton doesn't get a free pass. We're, we're experiencing some of those shortages now, which are affecting our ability to respond effectively, which is eight-minute response time to each call is the national standard. When that happens, when we're short personnel, short paramedics, with a paramedic, we can get an intercept from another community. It costs us money to do that. If we don't get adequate staff, then we actually lose the call to another community. And we also lose level of service because any other community in our area, East Hampton might be the best prepared to get there within eight minutes to probably 65% of the community. Westfield could do the other side of the community to get that eight-minute response time, but you can't count on them having available staff all the time. So it really does, the push for fire department is to really have staff in-house to respond as needed to make the level of service that, to make the ALS level of service, eight-minute response time to calls. Every community is gonna miss some calls, whether it be your overtaxing staff. We have one ambulance, and once that ambulance goes out, we're gonna, you know, if another call comes in directly thereafter, we're always gonna have some of that. We go to other communities, we go to Westfield, we go to East Hampton, occasionally North Hampton if they have a structure fire. So there's some degree of calls that are going to come and be in other communities. But it's gotten to the level here in town that it's concerning, and so I'm in front of you, because I don't want this to be a surprise to anyone. And just really need to get some ideas to really move forward as a community to see how we can address this. Let's put on my glasses if they don't fog up here.
Maybe, John, if you could just, if you could tell us a little bit about paramedics versus EMTs?
Sure.
And just, you know, how many people are we talking about, et cetera, that you have on, on call now, et cetera?
Yeah, absolutely. So a paramedic is basically like an associate's degree. It's about a two-year program to, to gain it. The more a paramedic works, the better they get. So if you have a first-year paramedic, they're just learning, they've learned everything that they need to in the school, and then they really need to get out and start to work. Ideally, we put a first-year medic in with another paramedic, so you're not pushing their knowledge base, and they've got a time to learn. We're lucky in Southampton in the fact, because we do have per diem paramedics from other communities. We've got a lot of high-quality, you know, 15 to 30 years of experience, folks that are, are working for Southampton, very experienced crew from all over, not just East Hampton, we have Westfield, Amherst, North Hampton, Agawam. So we've got a, we draw a pool from a lot of different folks in the area. A basic doesn't do near so much. So a basic, when they come to a scene, they're pretty much stabilization and, and transport. A paramedic can offer therapies that would, you know, make the difference if they had, like, a, a, a brain problem, just to give you some medicines that will have a better outcome for a patient. That and just, you know, other cardiac, there's just a whole lot more therapies that a, a paramedic can do. So the quality of care is not just double, it's probably eight times greater than just the basic level of care of a basic. So the town had voted to go, well, the town had worked with select board and the, and the chief at the time in about 2012, just prior to my arrival, to go to a paramedic-level service. They went into an agreement with the state, and when I came in 2013, I pretty much got handed the new program to go paramedic. The problem at that time, it was, it was an unfunded mandate to the town, and so the town really, we did some struggling in our infancy, did a lot of compensation studies, did studies that the town administrator at that time had done to see whether it was worthwhile to go to another community to look for outside intervention for EMS coverage. It was determined at that time that it made better sense to keep the service in town. It was a higher level of service at a reduced cost. I think that's still true. I think that the problems that I'm having in wages are, like, even in AMR or Action, they're paying, you know, probably $3 to $4 more than we're paying our entry-level paramedic. So whether, if they covered it, they're gonna have to pay their staff the same we have to pay our staff. We've had, we've paid less than most other communities, and we've had a pretty solid workforce, just because I think they like the environment, it's a good crew, they work well together, they produce good level of care. But recently, we've lost some of our, our heavy hitters, if you will. So we might have 40 people on the staff, but there may only be anywhere from 10 to 25 that are available to take shift, and some may take a fair amount of shifts, and some may take one shift a month. So it, it becomes a little difficult because you really do need a lot of staff available. It's a part-time job for all of them. None of them work full-time, I'm the only full-time here in town, and so you're really dependent on people who are working within the industry already to do a second job here in Southampton to cover our ambulance on the paramedic level. I think COVID puts some particular stresses on that, just because, you know, there was a lot of challenges to taking care of folks in this COVID pandemic that put a lot of pressure in their stations where they have their full-time employment, and it also put pressures on us because of higher call volumes. We're, we're currently experiencing probably 70 more calls this year than we did last year. So call volume is up, medical calls are up by probably, about, little, medical calls are up by probably 40. So fire calls are up and medical calls are up. So there's, there's challenges industry-wide, and so Southampton is, is facing those challenges. Unfortunately, like I say, we've lost some of our heavy hitters. One of them went to the medical examiner's office, we've lost a couple to injury, military service one of them got hurt, just, you know, different things that have gone on, some with just some personal life changes. But when you lose a couple of your heavy hitters, now all of a sudden you have big gaps in your coverage. Even with 42 people on the roster, there just, there's not the availability. In years past, in order to deal with that kind of problem, I've reached out, reaching into the EMS community, if you will, which is Western Mass really, and I've tried to, you know, pick the, the best paramedics that I could find, ones that were vetted through the group that we have, because we work so well together, and with a high level of care that we want here in Southampton. And we've been really fortunate, because in the past, there's always been a fair pool out in the community, the Western Mass community, so that we had a fair amount to, to choose from. Currently, with, with shortages throughout the region, that isn't the case anymore. So not only are we losing people taking other jobs, but there also, as we try and reach out to get more staffing in, to maybe increase that roster if we need to, the, the folks aren't available. So it's a challenge. One of the biggest challenges within that is, you know, I just hired a, a medic, a brand-new medic from, he's an AMR guy, he works at AMR currently, it's his primary job. He started as a medic there for just about $23.90 an hour. Our starting rate for a basic is $20.36. You could work as a bus driver here in town for the schools and earn $25, and you wouldn't have to maintain your license with all the medical knowledge and be responsible for the life and death situations that you run into. So it's really challenging to, you have to find folks that love it and are doing it because it's a passion for them, and, and have experience, because you don't want just brand-new people. And so those are, those are the challenges that we have. I don't think that, you know, we can't compete well with AMR, but I think we need to get closer to their rate of pay. And I use AMR because they're the lowest-paid in the area. If you go to East Hampton, I mean, I have the numbers that have to put on my glasses, and I can quote them, we can get you more information as you need, but East Hampton is approximately $26 an hour. Let me try and quote some for you, rather than me shooting from the hip. So, so Southampton is $20.36, AMR is $23.90, Southwick is $27.35, East Hampton is $28.15, Granby is $24.99 for a full-time medic, but then if you're a part-time, because they also use per diem at night, they don't get any step increases, but they start their, their medics at $25.98. So we're significantly less than anyone else in the area, significantly less. So I'm not sure, and I'd be happy to sit with any of you folks that had some time to go over some of the documentation I've gotten from other communities, so you can actually see. It would be nice if we did some sort of compensation study. I was almost thinking of taking this tack to go through the, the personal policy procedures board, just because I could work with that group to show them some of these other communities, we could look at the money that they're earning and what would be a fair wage to, to bring in here to Southampton. I, I, I think that, you know, that's, that's fine, I'd be more than happy to, to sit down and, and, and build that with anyway, and I've gotten a, a lot of documentation, we could get any documentation that you would like to move forward with that. But the immediate concern is, is I, I, this last month, I've had a number of open shifts, which, I don't like open shifts. Open shifts means I don't have any EMT at all to cover a shift. And granted, the number may be lower, it's, I can quote some figures again, but an open shift, we may just have, like, 10 open shifts, so we have two shifts a day. But 10 open shifts is a lot of shifts, that means there's not an ambulance in town that can respond. The other problem that we have is a short shift, where we only have one EMT that's on shift.
And if I'm understanding, you want one EMT and one paramedic on each shift?
Ideally, that's an ideal mix, only because we save the most money that way, because that's the minimum staffing level. The problem is if I have a brand-new medic, I need to pair him with another medic. So that works some of the time, doesn't work all the time.
So if you can't answer a call, then another, you mentioned that another town would come and do an intercept.
Another call would come and, and be primary.
Yeah, and that, that costs us money to pay that.
Well, we lose, you know, our, our billing right now, and I was gonna kind of get to that at the end, our billing, you know, is, is about $1,700 for an ALS 2 call. And so we lose $1,700 potentially on that call for each one that we give away. And this, this year, since January to now October, we've lost 57 calls.
57 calls?
57, 57 EMS calls.
Not able to answer.
That we're not able to answer because of staff shortages.
And the average cost per call is?
The average cost per call, let me dig into my, my data a little bit.
Is it the ambulance billing line, or which, which line?
You want the cost or the revenue?
Which, which line is this? Is it the ambulance billing?
We have to pay out.
It's a EMS wage is probably.
EMS wage.
I know they charge out.
But the, the ambulance billing line is something else?
Oh, billing, yeah, billing is what we pay for the coastal medical billing company that does all of our billing, billing, gets a lot of the reports from the hospital, does sends all the letters to folks trying to collect.
But you're talking about your EMT wages, basically, then?
Yeah, I'm talking wages, because unless we cover the calls to send to the billing, we don't collect any money from, from the call. I've gotten a fair amount of reports, I've spent a fair amount of time on the phone with, with our billing company, just, the other problem that we have, of course, is you don't collect on every call, so out of those 57 calls, you know, you're, you're probably, on average, for every community, not just Southampton, you quit approximately 50% of those calls you can bill out on. So you may, you may have, you may charge out at $400,000, but you're only gonna collect about $200,000. It's actually a relative average for us. And, and, and part of the problem is, like, Medicaid or Medicare, which is only gonna pay $300 or $400 on a call, even though we charge at $1,700, no matter what we raise that rate to, you're only gonna collect what Medicaid or Medicare is gonna pay. So the rest of that really needs to be written off, so it's not a viable thing. I, I couldn't stand up here and say that every call is gonna be worth that $1,700.
But doesn't, doesn't the individual have to pay what's over and above what Medicare
There, there is a liability to the individual, but chasing sick people is a challenge, and if they're deceased, that makes another challenge that you then get into with.
It's, it's also, what role do we want the fire department ambulance service to do? Do we want town employees chasing?
Yeah.
Sick people.
Bill collection, acting as a bill collector agency.
Yeah.
Billing company doesn't, Coastal doesn't do that for us?
Oh, they do, to a degree. So I've, I've, I've been, in the past, got lots of documentation, because one of my, when I, when I really started to look at billing, I did a couple of things just to try and increase revenue in years past. One thing I found that if we did, really scrutinized our, our, our information that we got from a patient, because if you can get all of their insurance information, signatures become a real big deal. Medicare, Medicare, Medicaid won't pay if they don't have a signature. During the COVID, that was a really challenge to get signatures. So there was a loophole for a short period of time where you didn't have to get a signature, but that's no longer the case. So if someone has no ability to sign, it's very challenging. They, the billing company actually has to chase to try and get a signature that's on file at the hospital. If the patient is unable to give that signature, that's almost an unbillable call. It can take months often to run a call through to actually send. It can take months often to run a call through to actually send a bill out, depending on the insurance information that the billing company can gather. So, I brought one of my lieutenants in and gave him a dollar an hour stipend to really work on just ensuring that we're producing as much information to the billing company as we possibly can. And that paid off. I mean, it upped our income by probably $20,000 just to have this individual be dotting I's, crossing T's, following up to make sure that individuals didn't miss things, didn't just not think it important, and we lost the billing on it. So, we really spent some time to ensure that we are maximizing our billing to the best of our ability. As I start to get into numbers and where we need to go with some of this, the other, which I was going to end with, but since we're talking about it, billing, I have the ability to raise rates. And honestly, rates have been fairly plateaued since about 2015, and there is opportunity. We'd base them to be fairly close to what East Hampton was doing. I think East Hampton is in the process of making a change. But just as I got probably four other comparable communities, the Coastal had provided their numbers, you know, we'll probably go from ALS2 because they have different designations of ambulance status when they go out on a call. So, a basic level call, for instance, right now, we charge $785.50. An ALS call with a paramedic, we charge $941.36. Through different therapies, what they call an ALS2 call, it goes up to $1365.50. You get some mileage charged in that, and there's some ancillary therapies that are outside of the ALS2 stature that we also charge for in addition. I'm looking to work with the billing company just because we need to get, ideally get more revenue because I know that that's a challenge for the town. And there is a percentage of private payers that will pay the amount that you charge. So, it is worthwhile to go up on your billing. You may not get it from Medicare, but you'll get it from some of the private payers. And we'd be going to a base, a BLS run at $967.40, an ALS run of $1,600, an ALS2 run of $2,457. We've been going up on our mileage charge and our ancillarys are just added charges that would kind of just be added charges, wouldn't really vary on top of that. So, it's a substantial increase that we're looking at in order to bring in more revenue. But the challenge really comes, I want to provide this, we need to provide the service to the town. We need to provide good advanced-level care so that people are taken care of when they have a problem here in town. It's the point of the ambulance service. There is the benefit of being able to get revenue, but we're, you know, to me, it's not about so much the revenue, it's about providing service. And so, and being fair to the men and women that are dedicated and here working for not a lot of money when they could work at other places for a whole lot more. And, you know, it's been a challenge, the budget, you know, I had a budget of about $465,000 approximately, shooting from the hip again, in the FY20 budget. Currently, my budget is $20,000 less than that, or, no, I'm sorry, $10,000 less than that, but I pay, we did a 2% increase across the town, and that was never added to my budget. So, I've got about a $20,000 shortfall from my FY20. We're in FY22. In FY20, I've got a $20,000 shortfall, and I'm not paying my guys near enough. So, it's a rock and a hard place. And as much as I really don't want to come in front of you and say that there's problems responding to calls and adequate staff, I would be against doing my duty to not come forward and fall on the sword, if you will, because it's a problem that's just really starting to be a problem, not just an occasional here and there. I mean, it's been building a bit, but you know, now that I've lost a few key people, it's really, it's a problem that we need to look at right now. I need to look at right now, and I believe the service needs to. And so, if I look at an increase, and I was looking at an increase along the lines of probably $3 an hour to a paramedic and a dollar an hour extra for a basic. Basics tend to be a younger group. They're not as monetarily driven as a paramedic, which is really a profession now. And even though that would be under the lowest rate in the industry, you couldn't get any other department to provide the same level of service for less cost than we're still providing it, but it's an increase for the department. Worst-case scenario, you know, it's unrealistic to think that if you said, yes, go ahead and do that tonight, it would be unrealistic to think that I could actually even get all the medics because there's still a shortage in the industry. But I need to have at least something so I can attract them and say, hey, you know, we're a good service, we've got a good group, we work as a team. Southampton is a nice community to work in. It's not, you know, high-pressure like an AMR in Springfield where you're dealing with gunshots and everything else that comes across the board, not that we don't have an occasional, but it's a good service to work in. And so, you know, that monetary thing, I mean, I averaged it out, it's about 642 man-hours per pay cycle. We have 26 pay cycles. We're talking approximately $30,000 to $40,000 is a good approximation at additional costs that we'd be looking to needing.
For the year.
For the year, to finish, just to finish out this year. And we'd really, you know, I know there's no money, and I don't even know how to even ask for money because I don't know, there's no money trees around. But for the next fiscal year, I would really look to, you know, building back my FY20 budget to where it was, plus the 2% increase that we've done, plus whatever pay increase that we do here. And maybe it needs to be an article that we put in front of the town meeting for a vote. And I know that everybody is vying for the same free cash, which they're, joke that there isn't any, but you know, it's not really a joke. I'm sure it's hard, it's not like that money's just going to be found under a rug somewhere. It's going to be money that we're going to work to find.
Sure. And I think our challenges are always that it's not just a one-time cost, it's a recurring cost.
Yeah.
Even if you do some fixing now, we definitely have, you know, bigger issues down the line.
Yep.
So, it's not that easy to solve. Okay? And I assume this is going to be something as part of your budget presentation when we get into the budget season as well?
Oh, absolutely. And I would appreciate the opportunity to, and one thing that didn't happen last year is I never got really an opportunity to present in front of the Finance Committee. And I think that that's a crucial step for a department head, just because when the budget came out and it had a shortfall already with a 2% increase, it made no sense. In years past, I have had, because of shortfalls with either ALS, because we've always had some level of shortfalls, whether it be not an available paramedic or whatever it happened to be, as we've built the service, because remember, we just really voted, the town voted for the second shift. When did that go through? 2016? Thereabouts. I'm sorry, I'm phoning a friend in the audience, they're trying to help me here. So, in about 2016, we did go in front of the town with an override, and specifically it was to get the second shift so we had full-time ambulance coverage. And, you know, since then, it's just, you know, we've been building the service because you're not just going to hit the ground running, you're going to, you know, just start and work. Then we've got the trailer, which works as sleeping quarters because before that, we were having folks sleep in chairs. So, we're building it. Hopefully, we'll be looking at a new station. Hopefully, we'll be looking like a department that is more attractive to the limited folks that are out there in the EMS community, and they'll want to come in, even though we may not, even with $3 added, we won't be the highest, but I think we'll still be an attractive bet for them. And I know that when Johnny come in, we'd talk some just about, you know, what would it look like to bring in an outside service? And honestly, if you're going to have, you know, a level of service where you're going to get to calls within the eight minutes, that's the national standard for a response on an ALS unit, you're not going to go to East Hampton at $25 an hour or $28 an hour and get the service for cheaper. You can't, you know, AMR is paying more. And honestly, you know, if you get an AMR in action, they're going to stage an ambulance on the Hoy Oak Line, and I just don't believe that that service would be the same as having a service here in Southampton with the response and the community level of support that we get from the really fantastic job that the men and women do now. I really am proud of the group. They do a great job. They stuck with it through thick and thin. I think this pandemic really pushed the envelope of what these folks do.
Understood.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, again, you know, timeliness is, you know, with all of our talk about our new committee, I mean, all this stuff about cost efficiency and how can we improve our service? How can we either share services? How can we get other towns maybe to help, you know, buy into some of our services? You know, what are some of the creative ways that we're looking at trying to both raise money and also, you know, provide a level of service that everybody expects in town? I mean, that's part of our charge with this new ad hoc committee that we're setting up. So, again, this is a very timely topic to raise before, John.
I think also, given the, you know, the latest census data is out from the feds over the past 10 years, and the population of the town Southampton's grown by 7.5% over 10 years, and I don't know what's grown behind that, but the earlier analysis that I did, while the library was talking, we printed 161 new houses on the plots here in town. We didn't lose houses, so that's a net gain if you figure the average, I think since it said the average home in Southampton maintains 2.3 people, you do the math, the numbers are growing up. I think the first question is to ask the voters to reaffirm. Do you want 24/7 ambulance service? Do you want 24/7 fire? My guess is the answer is going to be yes. Okay, then that's what it is. I think one of the, and the Fire Department is no different than any other department when I have this criticism, is that it's just the way we do the budget. There's a line item for wages. You know, so what I'm hearing is one paramedic around the clock and one EMT around the clock is your ideal situation. Right? So, 168 hours a week, 52 weeks, that's 8,736 man-hours, person-hours, you know, so there should be a paramedic line item and then an EMT line item here, there. Yes, you can transfer in between wages. You can't go from expenses to wages, and it might create more work. But what I didn't hear, is I didn't hear any requests for the Fire Department. So, those that are on the Fire Department, are you comfortable with those wages right now?
Well, honestly, because so much of the service, like when a call comes in and the folks that we're getting are not the AMR, just paramedic only, the folks that we have and staff are also Academy of Trained Firefighters. So, if a call comes in, and if they work a shift, and let's just use for the sake of discussion that they work a 10-hour shift and there's no call that comes in at all, well, half of that could have been a fire call, could have been an EMS call.
Yeah, no, I, yeah.
So, as I, because I went around with this with the Finance Committee, and this is not my first time dealing with every question that you've had, so I'm happy to spend some time answering for you. So, I really looked at, first I started to do a budget where it was like, okay, if we're doing, you know, 72% EMS and the rest in fire, then why don't we proportion the budget at that to sort of set it? It becomes kind of relative because what happens, as soon as you have a fire call, you get many more personnel than just the two that you put for staffing on an ambulance. You can have 12, 15, 20 on a fire call.
Your general staffing doesn't have a firefighter only in the station house. A firefighter only comes in on a second call or?
Comes in on a three-hour minimum. So, if we get a call that comes in, like we just had, you know, I'm sorry if you're distracted, we had a traffic accident just down the street. Whatever folk come in, they're going to get a three-hour minimum to respond to that call, and then if they work longer than that three hours, we had a structure the other night where we're spending a little bit more time. And so, whatever it is, that's what we pay. So, for the budget, I pretty much, the fire wages and the EMS wages are always about the same, and they just, it just kind of works out, and so.
I just think it's, as a layperson on the outside, one of the residents that just sees this line item, I think the more details that we can put in the budget, specifically, if we decide, if the voters decide, we're going to have EMS or ALS2 around the clock, that requires a paramedic for 8,736 hours.
But that paramedic may not just respond to ALS.
I hear you, but that's the bare minimum we need to pay. You know, we might be able to use them over on fire and all this stuff. But the other thing that isn't being shared, I mean, it is because you said it, but I don't think the public knows it. So, when you say you're unable to respond to a call, doesn't that really mean that there's nobody in the station to go?
That's correct.
Right. So, that's even a bigger public. So, the perception is that there's folks sitting over there all the time.
Yeah.
Basically, you said tonight, that's not the case.
And if a fire comes in, you'll draw people from home, but it's not the same as ambulance ready to roll being there within eight minutes. Yeah, it's not the same. And, you know, and so, you know, I really spent some time to sort of break down between fire and EMS, and so, as I say, from the, if you take just a straight day with no calls, I split it in half because they could respond to either call. If a call comes in on the EMS side, I do three hours, it comes out of the EMS side of the pay scale, and then the rest gets split 50/50. So, if they do two calls or three calls, that's nine hours, covers the whole shift on the EMS side. So, I do proportion it towards EMS or fire with the budget, and then towards the end of the year, if there's a lop side to one side or the other, then I figure out to do transfers as needed.
Yeah, between EMS and fire, but not the level of EMS versus paramedic.
Yeah, I think there's a better way that would allow you to then have analytical data to go back to the community and say, this is what we got to pay a paramedic, 20X, whatever it is, right? Because I came up with $34,994 to do the $3 and the $1, right? So, that's a big number. There's a comment there. So, you know, there needs to be a story to explain to that. And then maybe there needs to be, based on your last three years of actual fire calls, a separate line of, hey, you know, this is where we pay the fire out, but we're always going to pay the paramedic and the EMT because we dedicated to keeping these ambulance, this ambulance here.
Yeah.
But it's probably not for tonight.
Yeah. No, I think, you know, as we get into budget discussions, I think this is all discussion and ideas.
And I'm more than happy to share because I've got a very, I've got a matrix that, you know, for years of experience that they work, they give extra money if they have like the fire side of things and those kinds of things.
I would assume, I just wanted to be clear, I thought you did present before the Finance Committee last year, you did not?
I didn't have that opportunity.
I thought everybody was invited to present their budget before the Finance Committee.
They were.
They went through everybody?
I thought you did.
I don't.
I'm pretty sure you did.
Yeah, there were questions.
I'm 100% positive you did.
Last year was the most structured we had been because we had not had a committee the year before. Last year with Ken Cole and Mary Syriak and.
If I presented, I guess it just didn't feel effectual because the numbers that I presented, all of a sudden, what came out for town meeting was, there was a lot of short, no 2% was added on, and there was money that was also, I just, I guess it felt ineffectual. And if what I'm remembering is that it just felt ineffectual, then perhaps it's just that's what.
Okay, well, we'd have to review that again. But anyway, there will be an opportunity this year as we get our budget structure going, but also with this new committee that's coming up. I mean, I think this is good information for us to give us a heads-up in some of the challenges you're facing. I mean, I'm not.
And as much as you can produce in detail, you know.
Yeah.
You said you have a matrix of produce that material because that's the kind of thing I think people are going to be wanting.
Yeah, I've got so much detail that I'm afraid that I overwhelm you. I mean, honestly, I mean, because I will certainly get you, the other part of my problem is I'm going to be taking a vacation that's supposed to start tomorrow, but I've got some business I've got to clear up in the department before I can leave. And it's not opportune only because, you know, I want to make sure that I get on to any kind of warrant article for the town meeting on the 4th, and I'm taking 13 days, which is the longest vacation I've taken in a number of years. So, I just, that's why, I mean, I would have had more that I would have given you for data just prior to this meeting, but I wanted to make sure it read well.
All right. At least to get this far and let us know that this is an issue and something that we'll be hearing about again, I'm sure, so.
Absolutely. And yeah, I can provide more data to Ed, I'll work on that.
Yeah, yeah, get anything to Ed and we'll get it around.
Yeah, and yeah, and maybe honestly, I know that it might be productive to even sit with one of your folks just prior to submission to Ed, just so that I can ensure that you get some sense that I'm covering bases. I know that could be helpful.
I'll leave that to Ed. He's got his time schedule, he can determine how he wants to handle that.
Yeah, now that he's got all this extra time without having to do the accounting, right?
Right.
Good. Well, thank you, John. We appreciate you coming and all the time, and I hope you can get out and have a good vacation.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care, Jen.
Great. All righty, let's keep on moving here, guys, we're running time. COVID-19 update, do we have much to say here? I know we heard a little bit from what Francine reported from the Board of Health, but is there any other?
Our Southampton numbers are dropping, knock on wood. Hampshire's still in that orange category, is it? So, and my recall is we're, Hampshire County is only at about 61% vaccinated, so, you know, there's some, shall we say, concerns there. But the good sign, at least for Southampton, is at least in the last couple of weeks, our numbers have, are lower than they were previously.
But I think Francine, you said there's.
According, yeah, as of September 30th, there were 16 cases.
16 cases as of September 30th, okay.
That came off the.
State list?
The state dashboard.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, all right. All right. Moving on to the CARES expense status, I wanted to present you this document here, it's in your packets, I didn't get in, I don't think it got around on the electronic version. But this is something that I've been working on, trying to help out with the tracking of the CARES money that we've been spending. And so this is still, it's a good draft, it's not absolutely perfect. But you have basically a page, more or less, for each department. So for example, there's Board of Health, Council on Aging, Emergency Manager, sorry, the core Town Hall, which is essentially Ed and crew, Emergency Manager, Fire Department, Highway Department, the Library. And then I think I called something, other Town, sorry, other organizations, and that included the Agricultural Committee, the Housing Authority, and the Community Cupboard. And then Other Town Hall, which is essentially the Building Department, they're the only ones that had a request in for the CARES money per se. All of the department heads, as you know, got folded into the Core Town Hall because of the laptops that was basically their main acquisition during this. Police Department and Norris School and the Town Clerk had a little bit of a separate one because we put the annual town meeting and special town meeting costs in there. So this gives you an idea of the kinds of things that people had asked for from the CARES account, department by department. And what you have here is basically when Ed and I allocated out funds, depending on how the CARES money was given to us, I guess I would say. And just a reminder, we got, correct me, Ed, $533,000, I believe, total?
Yes.
About that. In two tranches. And I got involved only in the second tranche. So a lot of this money at the top part of your page, oftentimes with the, anything with wages or PPE was usually, the heaviest part was in the first round of the CARES money that we got, probably in the middle, well, late spring, early summer, early summer probably of 2020. But anyway, what I've tried to do, and I'm going to be passing this out, the various department heads had seen this, they had probably seen a last copy about three months ago, so I'm going to send this around to them. But what it is, is the vendor invoices I've been taking off every town report, as you know that I've been signing warrants last year. So I was keeping track of vendor invoices. And so what you have here as of September 9th reporting, you've got the vendor that would have been used to pay whatever that item is to your left-hand column there. And in many cases, you have probably, let me find one who's a good example. Oh, I don't know, somebody here, just got to have a couple. Maybe the library, yeah, the library, for example. Not to pick on them, but just say we're here tonight. Under the line item, for example, of hand sanitizer and gloves, okay? So you've got vendor invoices for Uline, Amazon, Mass Surgical, WB Mason, and RichCo. So all of those vendors are vendors that they use to buy these things. And the $909, $909 is what's been invoiced so far and paid. And when you see the online version, when you click on the $909 up in the formula bar, you will see how much it was per each vendor, okay? So that's how the total then came up to those. So this allows them to track what I've done to make sure that we're in sync with their own records, each department's records of what they've done. Where there are some discrepancies that I have to go back on are mostly wages, people that were out due to exposure to COVID or risk of a family member having COVID, et cetera, et cetera. There were some wages that I might have misallocated, especially because some of the police and fire and highway folks work multiple departments, and I may have attributed them to the wrong department. So there's a little bit to be re-verified with the department heads. But this is essentially how a lot of the money was spent. We are, at my totals, somewhere around the, I guess we thought we had about $100,000, I think Ed, left to reprogram because a lot of this was not spent out. So out of our 500 and some thousand, for example, just on the very first one, a public health nurse, that was a request in round one for $15,000. Well, it was approved at that time, but it never got, never got used. So that's money that can be shifted to cover some other overage that they might have had in a different line. But this, this is really, don't think of it as an overage or underage in that sense. This is just an internal management tool, really, for the departments. This is not the report that gets filed to state or the feds or anybody else. This is just showing them what got approved to be bought, especially from the equipment items, which that was the biggest ask in round two, was all the various kinds of equipment that people wanted. And so you will see, for example, on the fire page, on the second page of the fire one, there's a listing there of the equipment that John had asked for that was not approved. And that was not Ed and I, that was approved, that was not approved by the state, by the CARES Act program, okay? So that's just to give you a sense of what we're doing to try to keep this moving forward. And I'm relatively comfortable with it, but definitely, you know, it needs a real accountant to sit down and look at it. I've just been trying to track it and keep it going so that we know where we are and that it helps Ed to do the reports that he's got to do for state. And I believe we've got until the end of this month to do.
Reprogram.
A reprogramming. So we've definitely got to spend some time with the various departments and re-verify. I know a couple of them have approached us saying, we need to do this and this, can we do that? And we've just got to say yea or nay or contact the person at state to be sure that it's okay to allocate funds and spend it that way.
You're moving it around, if it wasn't spent in one department, it could be reprogrammed for use to another department.
It could be another department, it could be within the same department, yeah. No, this is just, this is really just an internal management tool. Please just think of it like that. It's not a set in stone budget per se. Okay? Does that make sense to people?
Yes.
So this is the, you know, the level of sort of detail, but the kinds of things that people were spending the CARES money on. So just to say that we've got a pretty good idea of where things have gone, and this covers through, like I say, up till a month ago. So I'll be trying to also update that. But it's really been the, you know, there were some, you know, large amounts that were allocated early on for things like PPE, for example, only because we had no clue. You know, we didn't know what we needed. And, you know, the early days of the pandemic, we really just didn't, we didn't know what expenses we were going to have, what we were facing, right? So a lot of money got put in in certain areas that, you know, probably is way underspent because, you know, again, there were times where we couldn't find the PPE, other times we managed to get it free through various connections. So that's just kind of the status of things. But if anybody has a question, I can try to answer, or not.
I have a question.
I'm sure you do.
No, only because it all came up tonight.
Yep.
And I guess I'll pose the question knowing I'm not going to get the answer tonight. So if I look at the MU7 of the library, fiscal year 2021 was $157,365. Does that or does that not include the additional $13,732 that was given as CARES funds? Because if it does, that brings it up to almost $170,000, which means.
I don't believe it covers the CARES money.
Right, so.
Because it wasn't an appropriation of the town.
We appropriated the CARES money.
No, but it wasn't from this, the source was not the town, it was an external source. It's like that they can't collect money from donors to make up the $9,800 and something dollars, simply because it's not acceptable.
Yes, donors, I understand.
None of the CARES money was taken into consideration when people came to present their budget request to the Finance Committee last year. The CARES money separately, so that.
As far as certification purposes goes for this form.
I don't think so, but Ed.
No, the CARES money would not count towards that.
Because it's not actually part of the town budget.
Well, it's sitting on our balance sheet at $553,000. But I yield your point.
But it wasn't.
I know. Yeah, I agree.
It not originate from the tax basis with the commitment that they're looking for.
Yeah, exactly.
That's my understanding.
I'm not the lawyer in the room, but I can make an argument since the calculation was $262 for every resident in the town.
Yeah, well.
I hear you.
It was possible, there's a connection there.
Yeah, so anyway.
We should still find the money for the library, but I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
Just making a point.
But I think, you know, this just at least gives you an idea where, you know, where things are somewhat. And so there is money to be spent in just about all areas, there's only a couple that have actually used all the money that had been attributed to them or designated towards them, whatever you want to say.
Do they have a deadline to request for reconsideration?
Before the end of, well, I mean, we need to get them thinking about that. We've had three or four that have come to us with ideas for requests, and I don't know how many more there really are. Most just want to use up the few dollars that they seem to have.
They'll bring it up again on Thursday.
Yeah, so with the department head meeting on Thursday, we can bring that up again, and I'll circulate this around to everybody before that so they can look at their things. But I wouldn't expect any more, like, you know, the ag commission is not going to come back to us, I'm pretty sure. The Community Cupboard might come back to us.
So for purposes of sharing with other bodies, i.e. the school committee throughout night.
Yeah.
You know, their district is holding off on filing the state reports pending determination as to whether or not the request is going to be considered at all.
Yeah, and I don't know that we know that yet. I mean, as you look at the school department here, I mean, they did finally turn in all their invoices, they did, they did get everything that they, that they were allocated in terms of.
Right, no, and I think they understood that this was asking for reallocation of funds from other departments, so.
So this is, yeah, this would have to come from other departments. So I mean, there are other areas where I would think we're not going to touch whatsoever that, you know, like, you know, a couple of these, it's like, we haven't used it yet, I can't see us spending it now. But we would probably take a look at, you know, is there something else within that department first that we can shift around? And if they need it, fine. And if not, it might be available for somebody else, but yeah.
And just shooting from the hip, there is, and I'm going by my memory here, so I believe it was like $9,000 and some change, could have been a little bit more than that, that actually when they declined some of our Phase 2 requests, we did not actually get to request to the total dollar amount that the state would have allocated for us. So I do, I do know that there's $9,000 and some change out there that we never actually got to request, so.
That is true, because we had some things that we thought were going to get qualified, and they did not qualify at the last minute.
So in the school department, shall we say, corner or whatever, I will say that's some funding that wouldn't be taken from another department, if you wanted to look at it that way.
Uh huh, okay.
So, right, so procedural-wise, does this ever come back to this body or are, is the chair and Ed just going to handle this on their own?
Well, it's basically been Ed's department, I just volunteered to help.
So this is outside the select board's authority to determine if there's any repurpose?
I think it would be more reprogramming, you know, that would be through Ed, you know.
Outside of the select board's authority.
Yeah.
Yeah, the select board originally authorized Christine and myself to.
To work on the CARES stuff.
To take this on and get it through, so.
Then I make a motion that any repurpose of funds have to come to the select board for approval before it's done, with the town administrator's recommendation on what to do.
Why?
Why? Because I think there was a previous body that approved that, there's since been an election. We have funds that are now available in the middle of a financial crisis, and that this body, if we're going to repurpose, should be fully aware of it and take a vote to do it, with the town administrator's recommendation, but not leave, you know, the $100,000 over there just to be ruled out as one individual may see. Nothing against the town, I want to be clear, I just want to be in the loop on this. And if nobody else on the select board feels it's necessary, then that's fine.
I think it should be done with our knowledge. I don't know that, you know, I would have to say that I would trust the people who are, you know, putting this reallocation plan together to make the right decisions. So I wouldn't, I don't find it necessary to go line by line, I'm willing to authorize them to do that, but do want the details for information purposes.
Can you repeat the language of your motion?
Just that before any repurpose of the funds is done, is that it be brought to the select board on the town administrator's recommendation of what to do, and then we ratify.
Okay, it's just going to be pushing it very, very close.
Still brought to the select board.
Be done by the 26th and this has to be done by the 29th, so.
I'm happy to have, I can attend a special meeting.
We don't need a special meeting for this. We've got too many special meetings already for the select board.
But, I mean, in all honesty, I raised the issue two weeks ago.
Yeah, I mean, and we, there's time in a sense. I mean, you know, we've got a department head meeting on the 14th, you know, we know some people that have come in with requests already. Again, it's got to be COVID-related, it's got to be things that, you know, it cannot be some of the things that we've heard tonight.
I agree, I agree. I just, I don't think it's within our best interest to have the town administrator continue to chase all this stuff down. I think every department out there, I know that, you know, if they're not watching tonight, they're going to watch this video tomorrow, you know, while they're here, and they're going to see that we're talking about this. It should not be the TA's responsibility to be chasing everybody figuring out what it is. There's a deadline, if they don't submit it, they don't submit it. This is, here's my recommendation, boom, 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 you're free to do with X with Y, and here's what I think you can do with it based on what qualifies under COVID. And then we just draw, but, you know, I think it's giving the town administrator more authority to take a strong stance, knowing that we're going to back into just get this done and not kick the can down, but.
I don't mean that this should be done in the absence of the department heads, it's not what, you know, I'm not advocating that.
No, no, they have to, they're the ones that have to request it in the first place. I mean, yeah, so, fun, okay. I hear a motion on the floor, so anybody want to second it?
I'll second it. Well, I just, I feel, also, I feel kind of out of the loop. And it would be helpful to know if money was being repurposed, like, why it was on the table and what it's going to be repurposed for, and et cetera.
And I just go back to, if we're taking this stance, we're sending the message. It's not like, oh, Ed sends out another request, well, you know, maybe I'll get to it, maybe I'm not, there's no hurry. No, there's a hurry. There's a deadline approaching, Ed has his marching orders, Ed's going to do what he needs to do to get his done. And I have no doubt that we're going to approve whatever his recommendation is, but it's just sending the message, respond to that email if you're going to respond, because if you don't, you don't come back looking for the money later.
Okay, all set?
Yeah, that's, putting the responsibility back on the department head, which is fine.
Right, and, you know, it may very well be that we don't end up using all of this money that we've been allocated. It could very well be. I mean, you know, we, like I said, we still have some here that hadn't been used yet, and I highly doubt that we're going to be finding things that are qualifiable now because it tightened up or shifted in terms of their priorities. So, Ed, any particular comments, thoughts? No? All right. Okay, can we have a vote? I hear a motion in a second. Who do you have a vote, please? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Nay? I'm going to abstain because I'm part of this. So I hear 2-1-1, so we will come back to you with a notion of what and how things will be repurposed for the October 26th meeting.
Yeah, believe me, I'm not saying we should not have access to the information. I'm just talking about the decision-making process here. So with that, I understand that we're doing it that way. That's fine.
That's fine, okay. All right, let's keep on moving. American Rescue Act. Any further things there, Ed? I mean, we know what they've told us before, but you had some ideas of how we might use some of this money at some point?
Yeah, like I said, I still feel that we can, I know that we can use it for any police trainings that are required due to the changes in the Police Reform Act. I am 90%, I'll say 95% certain that we can use it in the use of upgrading our website. We know the infrastructure allowances already. We can use it for premium pay.
The phone system?
What's that?
The phone system.
I really have not seen a direct correlation to the phone system as of yet.
Okay. Might be worth asking somehow if we could figure that out. You know, if you think about, I don't know, less services at Town Hall being in person? I don't know. Not sure, but, you know...
Yeah, and I think, I mean, John had made the point earlier. If we wanted to tie something like open checkbook to a new financial system, I think we could push the new financial system, you know, through that way, because you're putting that information out on the town website.
Well, I think, you know, how would you like to proceed? I know we've been talking about getting together with the water commissioners or, you know, anything, but I mean...
I do know, because from another project, I had a chance to talk with Tom, and their number-one priority, and I'll forget the exact footage now, is to replace the water line here on College Highway, and I believe it's about 10,000 feet worth, which is, you know, fairly expensive. I think it's about just under $3 million to do the 10,000 feet. So, you know, we had talked about that. It basically ends up at Pomeroy Meadow Road, and Tom was saying, well, you know, they'll have to do it in phases just because of the overall cost of replacing, you know, that section or those sections. And, you know, I had brought it up because of the ARPA funds, and we had started talking and, you know, if we could maybe utilize 10% of their project costs, you know, which would equate to somewhere around $300,000 of ARPA funds, it would help, you know, probably move another section of that along and get it done quicker.
But I think the intent is not to use all of the money on one particular project, though, right?
No, but in total, we're due to receive 1.8 million dollars, so...
Over time.
Right.
Yeah. Well, and I know there'd been some mention about maybe something, I don't know how, but something tied to the idea of the public safety complex, et cetera. So who knows? I mean, there's ideas out there, but two things. First of all, I forgot, and I think if you mentioned it, I forgot, but on Rini's note, there will be a public safety complex meeting coming up, I believe, October 25th at 4:00. So that is getting going. But what I've seen with other towns, and so here's a question, just because I feel like we aren't, you know, we sort of know the big topics, but yet we're not being able to take steps forward on this. What I've seen with other towns, and I think North Hampton is one, maybe East Hampton too, is that they've put out like a community survey, but an online Survey Monkey kind of thing to the townspeople to say, okay, here's what, you know, the ARPA money can get us, you know, and granted, they're getting a whole lot bigger money than we are. But nonetheless, you know, in the interest of town involvement and transparency and getting ideas from people, whether we think that would be a worthwhile approach to also do something like that? It's basically a Survey Monkey kind of thing. It's not a very complicated, it was probably a five or six sentence, I mean, five or six question survey, I would think. I don't know if that's a worthwhile use of our time to do that.
I think especially, well, that's two questions, right? So question number one, should we do it? Is because other communities have done it, and a lot of them have, it would be very easy to do something that I call R and D. So we just request and duplicate it, print our town seal on it and send it out. From what I've seen, they've been kind of like general comments and feedback or solicitation to kind of gauge the group. So I see that as a positive because it's public engagement, right? So it's helping. Who would do that within town? That's the second question. I don't know who would get saddled with that or be able to do it. That's just my initial thoughts.
Yeah. No, I mean, all of those things, even when we, you know, it was, you know, it would be, quote unquote, all volunteers, right? I mean, you know, the folks, you know, when we did the community survey for Master Plan, I mean, it was, you know, we worked as a committee to put it together, but then it was put out through PVPC to put it online for us. But, yeah, I mean, there's various people I'm sure that are very adept at Survey Monkey. I'm not, but I don't know. Ed, any?
See who I can find that might be good at that. I mean, it will give us a gauge as to, you know, how the community feels. Do they, you know, do they feel there are a lot of, you know, social needs, like, you know, rental assistance, food assistance, you know, testing clinics, vaccine clinics, what have you, you know, versus some, you know, other things of, you know, whether it's infrastructure improvements or, you know, premium pay or, you know, website updates.
Okay, well, let's investigate that a little bit and see. Maybe we can, I'm sure we can put our hands on the one from East Hampton and North Hampton and see what that involved as well, but, okay.
And then, Chris, just on those lines, I didn't, I forgot it before on the liaison report, but the, at some point in the previous meeting, the Select Board approved or acknowledged that Joy and I were to attend the meeting.
Oh, yeah.
With department heads, specifically on the topic of premium pay.
Yes.
So Joy can jump in after me, but I, it was a very, from my point of view, it was a very informative conversation. I don't even think it lasted a full hour. They were well-prepared and had their facts laid out and their reasoning and logic behind it. We made some observations of, well, here's a couple of questions that I have just looking at this. They took that as constructive feedback. They're going to update what they're going to present in the, I believe, probably the next cycle for the Select Board meeting. They'll be looking to present that to us for consideration.
Good, okay. Great, glad they got together.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything to add. It was very well put together. I think they just had a, they're going to update some of their information.
Okay.
We had, like I said, we had a couple of questions. Yeah, so it should be a very informative meeting.
Great, all right. Well, we'll see what they come up with. Great. All right, let's jump then to the revenue and expenditures of 2021. We have a report here, and Ed, we've got revenues, and we still have almost all the end-of-year transfers, but not quite all yet. Is that right? Or am I wrong on that? 2021. Looking at the total general fund, for example, is that?
Yeah, those are the ones that were done like a town meeting, so this does not reflect the ones that were the departmental transfers at the end of May and June.
But on the bottom line, those transfers would have a zero impact, right? Because it's an account that's over, you're just using it.
Right. It just would give you a better idea of the accounts that actually finished in a negative.
If I'm reading this right, which I don't think I am, but my first stab at this was, had a budget of $27 million in expenses. We actually spent 22, so we underspent by 5.3, but we were short in revenue by 3.5 million, which would indicate our free cash is going to be 1.8 million dollars.
Yeah, it's not going to be the case, so...
Oh, I wish it was.
Yeah, and it's like with some of the revenues going through them, it's like, I know that some of them have to be still off due to some journal entries. It's like I looked at ambulance fees, said minus $1,000, minus $100,000. We hadn't received any. I know we got turnovers for ambulance receipts, so I'm thinking that, okay, it went into one account and needs a journal entry to go into another one.
But that would still be a zero impact.
Well, as long as that other account is shown on here, yes. You're correct.
Yeah, as far as revenue, what jumped out at me was on page six of the revenues is all our permits, inspection fees and all that. We collected exactly what we budgeted, not a penny over across the board.
I've asked that question over and over again. Why does it always match exactly if there was no estimate made? I don't know how you plan a budget if you don't estimate what you think you're going to bring in.
I mean, we do have revenue revisions on that page of 218,000, but then estimated, revised estimated revenue at 265, and then actual at 231. Is that right?
Yeah, I'll look further into that, find out for you.
So, I mean, as we look at this, I mean, we've got the general fund page on page two, right, which is our basic 564,000. So estimated revenue at 17,979, actual at 18,543, so basically a surplus of 564,000 on page two on the general fund. But then, John, you were looking at page whatever, 16, period?
Six.
Six.
No, but when you read the...
Oh, I went, I took the total, yeah, I took the total, the last pages of both, revenue and expenses, and put those two numbers together. Under revenue, what is tax exemptions?
Yeah, the first page, tax exemptions.
Because we were anticipating it to be 40,000, and we have 7,500. Is that for like the blind and elderly exemptions from the state?
Grants?
Where they offset our...
It could be versus innovation. I'll check and let you know.
So it's essentially this set of accounts that we would have to have Eric or somebody, Eric Kershaw, the firm we're talking about, take a look at, right?
That would be one of them, correct.
And then we look at page three with the school. So this added together, the estimated with the revisions to come up with a million 88,000. And then the actual is the exact same number in the revenue revisions, and you're showing a deficit of 476,000. I don't understand.
The account may have been set up to show that, that anything that went into actual revenue goes into the revenue revisions. Again, I didn't set this up, so I'd have to look at it.
Well, hopefully there's more revenue receipts that need to be posted for '21.
And so the other special revenue funds, that's where any of the grants would be pretty much that we've gotten? Not only that, but...
Sounds right. Should be the 24 counts, yeah, other special revenue funds.
The public safety bicycle grants and a couple of ESSR grants.
Right.
Yeah, we might just do a double check on that, too, because I think with the grant committee, we were trying to keep a list of the grants that were received, and I know there were odds and ends from the police and the fire, but that, they showed up somewhere else, didn't they? Didn't I see those? Thinking I saw them in another page here. When there was, you know, aside from the grant committee itself, there were other ones, but they might have been in this fiscal year. I may be wrong on that, so maybe it was just those few. So what do we, what do we think? What do we know? What are our concerns that we see from here?
I'd say, you know, we have enough money to, we've two-fetched closed out. Comparing the revenue and the expense.
Well, I'm just shooting from the hip here, but my guess is I think a lot of this will get flushed out once we're able to get somebody to dive into it and dig into it, because there should be, and I'm fairly confident that they're out there, there should be pretty good check guards already in place, you know, because these reports are coming from the town accountant, or town accountant, right?
The financial software system.
Right, and aren't they, isn't that Office of the Gatekeeper? Yes, right. So there should be either a, there will be a separate set of books. For example, you know, any money that comes into the town is coming into a designated bank account controlled by the treasurer, right?
Right.
You know, so there's got to be reconciliations going back and forth with probably some identified or unidentified items, outstanding items. And this is really what this independent third person needs to be, is just come in and dedicate, look at this and drive through it, you know, hopefully four or five weeks, 40 hours a week.
Like I say, I have an idea that some of these are, just didn't have journal entries going, so...
You know, yeah. Because the, because, I'm just going back to, Chris, your report on the CARES money, right? We know we have invoices for that, but those would have hit those individual line items. They weren't all in expense to offset the CARES item, because the CARES line item in here just shows the revenue coming in.
Right.
So that you'd be doing your entries back and forth to alleviate that account.
Correct.
Well, any questions on that? Or would you like to look at the FY '22 report that's here, too? That's in our package, the beginning, expense report at least?
Last thing I would say on '21 is I do like interest and penalties where 152% over collection. That's good.
Well, like I say, too, basically, I mean, if this is true, or, you know, we've done a great job at collecting the real estate taxes.
Yep.
You know, looks like a dab more than what we had projected here, if this is accurate. You know, so there's been some good work on that level to get money in the hopper. But there were, I guess, on page two, the one that struck me, too, is just this earnings on investments. We estimated 20,000 and looks like 8,000?
Yeah, it was a very poor year for earnings on investments.
Whatever we're invested in is maybe a challenge here.
Well, we're limited to what we can invest in.
Right. And how come we were less on the peg programming? I thought we had a set amount.
We still estimated it when we do the revenues and the expenses. Basically, they end up matching, but you still have to pick a number at the beginning of year where you think they're going to come in at. And I know that, I think it was the last quarter for our charter payments, I thought it was down a few thousand dollars, so...
They make sense.
So I just, back on the earnings and... So, I just, back on the earnings and investments, that would fall under the treasurer, but the, Ed's right, I think what Ed's referring to is either the prudent person or the legalist. So, the legalist is ultra-conservative, hasn't been updated since 1950, so holds railroad bonds, has what you should invest in. So, most communities have adopted what's the prudent person, which means no more than 25% of your investment can be in equities, and it limits only the blue chip stocks. And several other communities, matter of fact, West Springfield has just switched over to that model. They used to have the advisor that the town uses now. So, I think, again, you know, there's only so much people can do and limited bandwidth, so...
Yeah, and your basic biggest part is basically your earnings on your bank accounts for your interest and whatever, so, yeah. So, it follows the market.
All right. Well, I think this just points out that we just need to make, hopefully get back in touch with Eric and see if he's available. If he's not available, we go to at least find out the second person that Jen had recommended and just see who we can get in here to do this.
I'm sorry, Chris. I thought we talked earlier about, I was going to commit to, Ed asked me to help him prepare the RFP, and we were going to send it to all three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes. I was, yes.
Yep.
Correct. You're correct. I'm listing out names of people that we had agreed upon, but yes, you're right. That is the procedure. Correctamundo, but sooner rather than later, yes, so we can get this one tidied up. All right. Any other discussion you'd like to have on the expense report, either beginning of FY '22? So, this is the beginning of what Bradley's starting to do here?
Yes.
Okay. And so, this would not have the revenue side yet. He's going to be working on that, too, or?
No, we don't have a revenue report as of yet.
Yeah, there's a few...
First thing will be to finish off the expense report and add in all revolving accounts and grants from the previous fiscal year, to have a balance to carry over.
And when do we need to get in any kind of reports to the state? But, I don't know, whatever we have to do to certify free cash and all that kind of stuff, are we, we're not going to be?
November, December. Just get delay. Usually, it's past the deadline, but they accept it into January.
Can I just make an observation here? If we, in fact, end up going down the road where we're going to ask for that article at the special town meeting about the audit, that if we do that, that same meeting, we utilize the time to clean up the town accountant expense line item, because that's all part of the same story. Instead of an expense line city...
Yeah, I was going to do that anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It just, it sticks out like a sore thumb.
Right.
891%.
Yeah, that was one of the articles I was going to recommend.
Okay. If nothing else, we'll keep on moving on. Anything else? No?
Nope.
All right. The Green Community Grant.
Nothing new since the last meeting.
All right. Our Cost Efficiency Committee discussions. I've seen some ideas of people that might want to join in. I think we haven't totally got it well-understood about the intent, and I'm sorry if I made it too complicated.
Okay. We're getting there.
We're getting there, okay.
Yeah. I think the groups finally understand that, okay, it's not separate. It's, as a group, you have to get together and basically appoint, elect one person
Right.
From one of those sub-entities of those groups. The only one I've gotten confirmation of so far that has done that and has a representative is Group Two, and that is Ian Ellingsworth will be, our police chief will be representing Group Two.
Okay, good.
And for that reason, that was, I was, I think I had mentioned that perhaps we should, the due date was today to have everyone selected, and that's come and gone.
Yep.
So, we need to, and it's happened because some of the committees have not yet met
Right.
Since we asked for the request, so I'm thinking that we should just set an extension date and let people make, now that they understand how it works, let them all meet with their respective committees and come forward, and then meet together those people who were selected. So, out of the selected group, they can pick their final candidate.
Exactly. And one good example of that is the Water Commission isn't meeting until tomorrow night.
Right, right. So, with that, how about a new date suggestion? Is two weeks from now reasonable, or do we want to, since we've set probably a November 2 meeting, would you like to go that far?
I would think two weeks should be reasonable.
I think two weeks.
Okay. So, let's say that we have them in hand by the 26th so that we can set up a meeting in November. All right. That would be great.
At what point do we select or select the public?
That information's been out on our website.
It is.
And I think Robert put it in his newsletter.
I'm just saying, on the 26th, is that when we're going to try and identify who those individuals are?
I don't know if we...
So, they could meet, or not, I don't know.
Need someone to volunteer on that level first.
Yeah. I don't know that we've had any volunteers yet, so...
Power sits with the chair.
We would, we would say, out of the people who volunteer, we would ultimately select, right?
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. Right. Well, yeah, so anybody, anybody from the public...
Those members of the public that would like to be considered for this.
Who's listening, yes. So, we have, you know, we've been trying to recruit for three members for the committee that have a financial management and/or HR background. You are more than welcome to join us. Please just contact Ed Gibson with your information, and we'd love to get people involved that are not part of our normal committee work here. So, anybody who's listening and feels like they've got the skills that would contribute to this, especially if you've had background in doing these kinds of exercises about how to be more cost efficient and how we can share services, or whatever we can do to provide better services to town for a reasonable cost, we'd love to have you join us. So, please do reach out before the 26th of October, and we'll hopefully get a committee instituted and meeting in November. All right. Is there any other business that can't wait until the regular meeting on the 26th? Yes, John?
So, I would just, for public record purposes, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to a report from the state auditor, Susan Bump, on an article that was published, first published in the Berkshire Eagle on October 5th, titled "Auditor Poor Rural Towns in Massachusetts Aren't Getting the Help They Need to Keep Up With the Wealthy Ones." Now, within that article, she issued, her office issued a finding titled "Public Infrastructure in Western Mass: A Critical Need for Regional Investment and Revitalization," dated October 5th. Her office had five findings and three recommendations. At the very top level, or 50,000 feet, the three recommendations were an immediate overhaul of the Chapter 90 formula, and dedicated revenue stream similar to the one cent that comes off the state sales tax that funds the MSBA, or the Massachusetts School Building Authority, broadband continuity throughout the rural four counties of Western Mass, and public infrastructure authority be created for the renovation, for the sole purpose of renovation replacement of municipal buildings with a target on small rural towns, rural towns under 10,000. I think that the fact that our state auditor has announced that she is not running for reelection and that this is out, I think she, we should grab this microphone and draft some sort of communication as the body as a whole to get behind this and to draw other communities in the four counties in, and really put the pressure on Boston to abide by her findings. And I think in order for us to, or to draft this, and I'm happy to start the draft and have Ed tweak it afterwards for grammar and English, Chapter 90, I'd like to get our highway superintendent's thoughts on this. And then I'd like to send the communication and the article over to the public safety meeting that's coming up.
Yep.
I think it's all timely, and I think if we all get behind it, and the more select boards that we can get on this, and maybe petition as a group, maybe we'll get enough.
That'd be a great idea, to try and connect with other select boards and do that, yeah. In fact, there was a meeting, I think, did I not see one from Worthington? They were organizing some meeting around this, I believe. So, I think...
Yeah. I mean, it's got the small bridges, it's got everything that we would like.
It does, yeah. And it could even apply to the Old Town Hall, too, in terms of, you know, renovation of buildings or indoor, those kinds of things. So, yeah. No, it was a very, very timely article, very, very well-written, very detailed. So, yeah, no, good point. So, let's keep that on the radar.
If there's no objection, I'll share it and copy it on it, and then I'll come up with a draft of our consideration.
Okay, and I think I have seen something. Let me, I'll check in my emails, but I think I've seen some sort of a meeting that's getting organized.
Okay.
I'll double-check that and share it around if there is.
I just have one thing, sorry. It slipped my mind, but there is actually an open space for any meeting. It is October 21st at 6:00 PM, and thank you, Cindy Palmer, for reminding me. I just wanted to get that out to the public before I forgot.
All right, sounds good. Okay. All right.
Yep, anything else? I just wanted to mention about, you know, the redistricting is in process or already has happened in terms of our representation in Boston, and it's changing, I think.
I answered that.
So, I mean, for us, you know, Lindsay has been very helpful in getting some things, you know, brought things to our way, so that's going to be different. So, we have to build another relationship.
Any thoughts on where we might be going?
Oh, it's already been, yes, we'll be represented out of Westfield, I believe.
For the state rep?
Yes. Whoever is representing, I don't know the name, but whoever, they kind of reshuffled the deck and reassigned districts to the current representatives. And Southampton is no longer within Lindsay Sabados' district.
Okay, had not formally...
We fall into the district of someone, of the representative from Westfield.
So, you're saying Lindsay Sabados is not our representative anymore?
Going forward, apparently.
I mean, is it the person?
With the redistricting, we knew the redistricting was happening, but last time we had heard from her, she seemed to feel relatively comfortable that she would stay with, be able to stay with Southampton. So, whatever's happened with population shifting all around.
How many reps does Westfield have right now? Isn't it just one?
One.
Yes, one. So, we fall under the rep for Westfield, parts of Chikavie. That's Old Canepex seat, right?
Right.
Almost, yeah.
So, while we're thinking about contacting and that might be something we would like to add.
What, lobby to get Lindsay back?
Well, no, I'm saying, bring it to the attention. I think, you know, overall, she worked very well on behalf of the town.
She's been very supportive, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, that's a shame if we...
Could we schedule a meeting with the new rep?
She was helping us with this.
Well, yeah, once we figure out who that is, yeah.
Okay, we're going to figure it out.
Once it's official, yeah.
Yeah, once it's really out there. And I think, I think the...
Out there now.
No, but I mean, officially, I mean, but I think usually, I would assume they would try to make it to or to. If they've got new towns that are there available, they would hopefully approach us, too. That would be nice, but anyway, yes, we would need to do that at some point. Okay. I don't think we have any personnel change forms, PCFs, PRFs tonight.
No.
We have one license and permit, one-day alcohol event for Point at Park. This is for Karen Porter.
Yes.
Saturday, 10:23, from 1 o'clock until 8:00 PM. This is Saturday. It's for a party, about 30 to 40 people. I gather all the paperwork is in order here?
Yes, it is.
All right. If so, could I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay. And then we have a set of minutes to approve for August 31st.
Motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, August 31st, 6:00 PM. Select board meeting.
Have a second on that?
I'll second it.
All right. I just have a question for discussion here. Under the reports section, which is page two, under Ed's report, the last bullet, the acquisition for the right-of-way from the Pioneer Valley Railroad for the Greenway, TA Gibson will reach out to the state for an extension of the $100,000 grant. First of all, so, starting at the beginning, it says TA Gibson reported the acquisition for the right-of-way for, we do not have the acquisition yet, so that's misleading, I think. We have a $100,000 grant to go towards the acquisition of the right-of-way.
Wasn't that really, didn't Ed update us that he had spoken with Pioneer Valley Railroad, and they agreed to apply for...
They agreed to our, the price that they had put in the MOU. So, this is just misleading, I think, in terms of, you know, so he's reported on the pickleball courts and on the interim accountant, and the acquisition for the right-of-way, but it's, it makes it sound to me like we've already acquired the right-of-way, which we have not. So, I think we ought to just tweak that a little bit somehow.
How do you read that that way? The acquisition for the right-of-way from Pioneer Valley?
Reported the acquisition for the right-of-way from the Pioneer Valley Railroad for the Greenway.
Yep. TA Gibson will reach out to the state for an extension of the $100,000 grant. Well, I think what's missing is Pioneer Valley agreed to the acquisition of the...
The use of the grant for the acquisition.
So, should it be switched around?
I think they just agreed to the price.
So, TA Gibson will reach out to the state for an extension of the $100,000 grant for the acquisition.
I will go back and...
It makes it sound like we...
I will go back and review the video to make sure that we're talking about the same thing.
It just makes it sound that we already have it. We know we've got a whole year to go to get the whole acquisition.
I don't see it, say, we have the, we have the right-of-way there.
Okay.
I read it a different way, but...
All right. I'll let you review it.
Maybe regarding, but like I say, August and September, it could be the meeting that I reported that Pioneer Valley Railroad had agreed to, kind of the terms of that letter from 2018, but I just want to make sure that that was the same meeting.
I think that is what you reported, but that is not what I really totally heard here. And then just at the very bottom of the page, the last three words, "There will be..."
TA, yeah, that's the only thing.
Yeah.
Minor things.
Yeah, I'll go back and review the video and bring it back to you.
With that, could we, well...
Do you want us to table the minutes?
Well, we could, I mean...
Yeah, table them.
Table, okay, all right. So, be it. All right. What else, what else? Anything new on other pending items?
Uh...
Town Hall, Charter Building, Comer Road. We're still also reaching out to Charter for their map, right, for that broadband thing?
Yeah, I'm going to send him a reminder email. I can't believe it takes him this long to produce a map.
Exactly. All right. And the naming rights, we might take a look at that at our next meeting, too. We had talked about looking at a bylaw on that.
I was going to say, does the board have a preference if it be done either by policy or bylaw? I mean, and if it does, I can just reach out to Michelle Randazzo. I mean, if your preference is bylaw, I can reach out and say, do you have any examples of bylaws for naming rights, or if your preference is a policy, I can say the same thing. Or I can just reach out and say, do you have any examples of policies or bylaws and recommendation for naming rights?
Right. I mean, is there, is there any advantage to one over the other in terms of, I mean, a policy, policy would not have to go to town meeting, is that...
Correct.
But we, we do have a draft of a bylaw, but it might be similar to do a policy.
Yeah, might be simpler to do a policy.
Mm-hmm.
And then it's easier to change later if people want, if select boards want to change it.
Yeah. Might be easier to do a policy rather than that, but why don't, yeah, why don't we...
It's always easier to do a policy.
Yes.
Why don't we reach out and find out if they have any recommendations for us, then that'd be fun. Okay. All right. So, with that, next select board meeting, October 26th, and then I guess we've decided now on November 2nd. now on November 2nd.
Right.
November 9th.
And actually, we have an executive session scheduled for October 19th.
We do?
We will.
Really? Yeah.
Yeah, we, we had filled in the odd Tuesdays with the executive session.
Right, okay, I didn't know that you'd had a meeting yet.
So is the board's preference to have that rather than at 6, at 6:45 again?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my...
Okay, well, I, I kind of got that hint last time, so I just, because I gotta schedule a meeting, I just wanted to make sure, right? Read everything right.
That sounds good, alright, and that's fine. And then just a reminder for the October 22nd, 26th meeting, rather, we'll have our reports in from the planning board, zoning and housing, the parks commission...
Yep.
And master plan will give a report as well, okay? So with that, could I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
Don't move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, we are adjourned at 9:51. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all.
Alright.